Good afternoon. It's my pleasure, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, to welcome each of you tonight to this meeting. Let's have our roll call. Now, I call this meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please. Everybody. Dave, thank you. One more time. There we go. This time, we will have our invocation by Mr. Gash and our pledge by Mr. Coulson. Let's stand, please.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity of serving this great county. We thank you for this counting, for the many ways you have blessed each one of us. We thank you, Father, for each one that is in our audience this evening, and those who may be viewing us by way of television. We thank you for their interest in our county government. We thank you for citizens who participate in county government and show a strong concern for the various issues. We pray that you might be with us as a board this evening as we deliberate the various issues. We pray that we will make those decisions that are best for the people that we represent, and those decisions that would glorify you. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I believe we've got Mr. Manziel. You want to add another item to the agenda? Is it on this printed one now?
I believe on the revised agenda, there's a closed session at the end, Mr. Chairman.
Any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, there was a desire to, I believe, to move the canine control information to after the items for consent. Go ahead and take the public addresses to the board now, but to move that down on the agenda.
Is that within the motion?
Yes, that's fine.
So will everybody. All right, let's vote. Okay. All right. Mr. Elliott, I believe you're next.
Yes, sir. On the agenda, under items for presentation, is resolution of appreciation to recognize Mildred Daniels. Ms. Daniels is an employee of the Department of Social Services and is retiring in thirty-plus years of service to the county. So we can, there can be a motion to adopt a resolution.
Okay. Second. Thank you.
Any other presentations as well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the resolution?
Please.
Okay, we have a beautifully framed resolution to recognize Ms. Daniels. It's the practice of Pitt County to recognize all of our county employees who reach the mark of thirty years or greater with our organization. So tonight, we would like to, if you allow me to read this resolution. It reads, "Resolution of Appreciation Honoring Mildred M. Daniels for her Years of Service to Pitt County Government, whereas Ms. Mildred M. Daniels began her career at Pitt County Government on September 19th, 1983. Whereas Ms. Daniels has served the citizens of Pitt County faithfully during her thirty years of service, and will retire as a social worker supervisor three on February 28th, 2014. Whereas Ms. Daniels serves the public with integrity, fairness, patience, compassion, and sincerity. Whereas Ms. Daniels has made a significant progress in the lives of people of Pitt County in many ways, including coordinating donations for coats, suitcases, book bags, and school supplies, as well as clothing. And whereas Ms. Daniels was committed to the safety and welfare of children, adults, and families in our community. Whereas Ms. Daniels has served as a longtime member of the North Carolina Social Services Association, and served as the District Secretary for the Eastern Region, as well as the Treasurer for the Pitt County Chapter. And whereas Ms. Daniels has served as the Coordinator for the Holiday Cheer for the agency's foster youth, and was instrumental in raising almost $200,000 from 1998 through 2013. Whereas Ms. Daniels was featured on the cover of the Employee Newsletter in the year 2007, and chosen as the Featured Employee in 2013. And whereas Ms. Daniels has served as an Agency Representative for the Maternity Fair, hosted by the Pitt County Health Center, the Coordinator of the Annual Adoption Awareness Project, the Coordinator of the Annual Foster Care Month Celebration, and was a Community Speaker at numerous events over her tenure. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does here honor Mildred M. Daniels for her commitment to the Department of Social Services, Pitt County Government, and for her outstanding and admirable service to the citizens of Pitt County, adopted the 17th day of February 2014, signed by the Chairman, Mark W. Owens, and attested by the Clerk, Kimberly Hines." Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Daniels, in addition to this, and as a supplement to what's been written for you, that is a specific order of what your life has been for thirty years, and how you give them to this county, and to the citizens of this county. In addition to that, there's very few people that give probably a third of your life to, maybe you get to be ninety. But if you do that, a third of your life to your actual employment, then I think it's an honor that is bestowed upon a few people, and we thank you. Would you like to say something to the audience?
I'd just say thank you to everyone that I have worked with. I have some of the staff members of the unit. I have some of my family here, my husband, my daughter, my son-in-law, a sister-in-law, one of my friends, and former coworkers. When I first started this, and we started the holiday, we didn't start it, but we actually worked the Holiday Cheer Project together, and we became real good friends from that. So I just say thank you for everybody's support, and I say thank you to the community for letting me serve the community. I hope I have served it well. I will sincerely miss serving the community, but in some kind of way, I do plan on continuing to be a part of the Pitt County community, because I have thoroughly enjoyed my thirty-plus years with it.
Bring your husband and your family up. We should have asked him to come up with it. I apologize.
Anybody you want to join, just anybody, just whoever you want. Sure, if you want them, that's fine.
Join.
You mentioned there were some of your workers that were here too. You want to acknowledge them, acknowledge your good work. Is this it now?
I think this is it.
All right. We thank you, and.
And Ms. Stark is also one of the DSS Board members.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, please. I cannot.
Take your time. Come on by.
I was kind of hiding my hand names without a following name. Ms. Shandra Meaborn, also one of the agency employees that sent the young lady out too fast.
Okay. Okay, anybody else we missed? Not, you know, a moment of this type, you do not want to fail to acknowledge any person that helped contribute to this young lady's fine work. Next order of business is we're going to take number two, which will be moved back over to item 10-2, because of the extensive review that we will have with that. And at this time, we will have a public address to the board. Have you got that, Mr. Manziel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. We have a number of people sign up tonight, and these appear to be all on the topic of canine control. We will start with Dr., or actually, Mr. Chairman, would you like the attorney to read the guidelines for the?
I think that would be appropriate.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern pursuant to our rules of procedure. Each speaker is allowed three minutes, and I will keep your time.
First one is Dr. Eric Toshlog. Am I pronouncing that correctly? You can help me. Toshlog, thank you. That was close.
Come around and pull it up, so you can be heard, doc. All right, state your name, and whatever you say you want to say.
First name is Eric, last name Toshlog, T-O-S-H-L-O-G. First of all, thanks for having me, and I must apologize for my attire. I just got out of the operating room and actually have to go back yet this evening. It is a pleasure to be here. In my role here, I was asked by my colleagues to just come give a medical perspective as the chief of the trauma center at Viden and Brody School of Medicine at ECU, on the medical impact of the dog attacks that I've seen here in the fourteen years that I've been on the faculty. I asked our data registrars, we have a data system and repository for the trauma center to pull dog attack data for me today for the last five years, and very briefly, it looks like we've admitted just to the trauma service. Now bear in mind, there could be admissions to the pediatric service or to medicine service, but just to the trauma service, we've admitted seventy-five patients to our service in the last five years. I've operated on fifty-nine of those patients. The average length of stay for their hospitalization was 3.3 days. And without going into too much detail, the range of wounds can be from something fairly insignificant, puncture wounds to a leg, puncture wounds to a hand, to things that are truly, I would say, particularly with respect to the small children I've operated on, truly catastrophic. Loss of scalp, loss of facial tissue that can't be replaced, maulings that permanently alter the cosmetic appearance of young children, elderly patients attacked, losing their scalp and their hair, to be skin grafted on their skull. Again, without going into further detail, some very significant injuries that we've seen over the years. What I can't tell from my data, being honest with you, is did all of these attacks occur within the county, or were some of these referred in from other counties? And I also don't have explicit data on whether or not these attacks occurred from stray dogs coming onto property versus someone whose own dog inflicts this upon them. I can't tell you from anecdotal, you know, recall, that certainly a significant number of these have been from stray dogs coming onto folks' property, and again, with pretty significant medical impact. You only have to see this happen to a kid once to think that we have to do something about this.
Thank you, doc. Appreciate your time, and we welcome an opportunity for you to be here with us.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Next, we have Billy Sanchez.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Billy Sanchez. I live at 777 Maple Ridge Road. I'm an occupational therapist. I've worked at home health for the last seventeen years in all districts of this county. During the course of my treatment of patients, many times I've encouraged them to engage in outdoor activities, be it walking in the neighborhood, gardening, or just sitting on their porch. Many times, they said they couldn't because of dogs. I dismissed it. I didn't think it was real, until this incident in our neighborhood prompted everything. At that point, after going through totes and totes of dog bites, calls for help, and then actually going to neighborhoods and talking to people, hearing their stories, spending time, where I saw the problems. I saw the dogs. I know those people weren't lying to me. They weren't lazy. They weren't noncompliant. They had no issues with dogs besides dogs themselves and the issue at hand. Another fallacy that I became enlightened on was, some neighborhoods you go into, many cars are parked right in front of the door. As a home health therapist, typically we encourage that, so people have the shortest distance from their car to the steps, so they have enough energy to make it up the steps in their home. And I'd go to a neighborhood and say, "Man, they need to check the water. All these people are sick." It wasn't sickness, it was dogs. Think about it. If you've got wandering dogs, the shortest distance from your corridor to your house door is right in front of the house. You're going to look for the wandering dog and try to get the heck in your house, or you have to case out your own home to make sure there's not a dog lying in wait on either side of your porch or in the bushes. Another thing to think about, there's areas in this county that it is more healthful to sit in your lazy boy and watch TV all day than it is to get out and exercise, or to work in your garden, or for a child. Their further growth and development psychologically and physically is better served by sitting inside playing video games than it is out riding their bike or playing with friends. During the course of this, we've met many wonderful people in this county that have put their hope in us to do something about this. Tonight, I pass this hope on to you, the county commissioners. I hope you listen to the people better than I listen to my patients. I hope you listen with empathy and compassion, not with callousness and indifference. Tonight, I ask you to do what you're indebted to us to do as the commissioners of this county, and that is to you define the goals and objectives of this county. You pass ordinances and ensure their enforcement for the benefit of all people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next, we have, can't read the first name, but last name is Morrison.
I'm Bob Morrison. I'm a retired ECU chemistry professor. I participate in Ironman triathlons, which consist of swimming, bicycling, and running. I've competed all over the United States, including three times at the Ironman in Hawaii, and most recently, last August, in Louisville, Kentucky. I've been riding bicycles on Pitt County roads for almost forty-two years. I'd like to speak in favor of the petition for the canine control ordinance. Dogs running along county roads, not under physical control of their owners, present a hazard to bicyclists. These uncontrolled dogs along county roads present a danger, because they will unpredictably run across the road in front of cyclists as they're chasing the bicyclist who is out front. The greatest fear of cyclist is crashing as a result of a dog running in front of their wheels. Over the last twenty years, I've had six or seven bad crashes with dogs. I've broken my collarbone, ribs in multiple places. I've had concussions, and I've had plastic surgery to replace an eyebrow that got scraped off while I was sliding down the road unconscious. I've had only one injury-producing crash not involving dogs, and that was when I didn't see some loose gravel as I was going around a corner. I had no dog-related bicycle crashes during my first twenty years of riding bicycles on Pitt County roads, up until the early 1990s. There were dogs on the loose, but I don't think there were as many of them, and I was faster then. As the population outside the city limits grew, so it seemed to me that the number of uncontrolled dogs on the roads. As our population changes, so should our ordinances change. I therefore support the petition for the canine control ordinance. It's important for all of us to make the Pitt County roads safer. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Christine Kelly Salomar.
Salomon.
Salomon, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christine Kelly Salomon. I live on 819 Driftwood Drive in Greenville. I've been a resident of Pitt County for twenty-six years.
Hold the mic up so that maybe everybody can hear.
I've been a resident of Pitt County for twenty-six years, as well as a nurse here at Viden Medical Center for twenty-six years. Fifteen of those years, I have worked for the trauma service, and seven years, I had the privilege of working with Dr. Toshlog as his trauma nurse clinician. In that role, I got to see patients after their traumatic injuries. Some of the specific injuries I want to talk to you tonight are about the injuries that our bite victims suffer. I classify them into the three Ds. The first one I'm going to address is disability. You've got patients who've come in after being bit. Dr. Toshlog alluded to a three-day stay. They go home, they're not better after three days. It takes them a while to get better. They're going to have bites. They're going to have dressing care. They're going to have wounds. They may have limited mobility. They may be using walkers. They may be using crutches. They're going to require people to help take care of them. If their children's, their parents are missing work. If the mother and child got bit, which has happened, they need people to help take care of them. The other D that I want to discuss is disfigurement. Bites leave scars. Children are three feet tall. Dogs are three feet tall. They like to bite their faces. We've had kids who've had their lips ripped off. We have a young girl who had her earlobe ripped off. In pirate country, one earring is okay, but not when you're going to a wedding. She's got one earring to put in. Plastic surgery is optional. It's not something that everybody can afford. So these, this disfigurement is permanent. Sometimes a dog will grab a hold of a leg of runners or bikers and actually tear tendons, and they'll suffer with a limp the rest of their lives. And the other D is despair. Being attacked by a dog is a very, very disturbing issue. Dogs are a pet. They should be friendly. People are used to dogs coming up to you, and dogs may bite for no known reason. If they're on a leash, they're less likely to attack somebody. It's something that we need to consider. These people suffer psychological issues as well. Post-traumatic stress syndrome is real. We had a neighbor of mine who lives on our street. We live in a nice neighborhood. Melanie Bryant lives in my neighborhood. She was chased by a dog that lives in our neighborhood, and her daughter was actually bitten by that same dog. She has not walked down her own street in seven years. She is that upset and doesn't feel safe on her own neighborhood. I recently had back surgery, and the doctor told me, "You need to get out and walk. Go ahead and walk." So I took my little walker, and off I went down the street. I made it two houses, and the neighbor's dog came out and chased me. I had no recourse. I couldn't run. I had to just stand there. I screamed. I felt the terror that people who get bit feel. It's a terrible feeling. If dogs are on leashes, they're less likely to charge after somebody and/or bite. I support this ordinance, as well as willing to put my money towards that in form of taxes as property owners, or however you see fit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, Annie Daniels, please.
My name is Annie Daniels. I live at 3003 NC Highway 33. I'm going to try to speak as briefly as I can. One thing I want to speak of is my worst incident that I've had, and that was getting into my car to come to work. When I get to my car, there's a huge dog under my car, which I had no idea, until I felt him breathing on my ankle, and he made this loud noise after me. I dived in my car. Okay, but my worst, one of my worst things too, is my mailbox. My mailbox is across the street from my house. I have to go over there, but there's dogs over there. Okay, I've almost been chased out into the traffic, and I've seen other people afraid of the same thing. And so, and I have to wait and see if it's safe to go across the street. But sometime I can come out of the house, and they still come out from the side back around the house, and it's frightening. And one day, it was a lot of noise out back, and I look out, and it was, it'd be, we're talking about pit bulls, chows, and dobermans. Those are those huge dogs that's there, and they're constantly carrying babies. They're always carrying babies, but they chase you. You know, I've seen them. I sit in my house, I see them chase people, and I know that somebody's going to get hurt out on the highway behind those dogs. Ever since they put the family dollar there, now it's, they're chasing the people that walk from way back in the neighborhoods. They come past my house, and it's this little tiny poodle that comes out to live with a group of them, and what he does, when he comes out to bark at them, all the other big dogs come running. And the people, they're afraid to run into the highway, so they try to run straight. That is so dangerous. Someone's going to get hurt. But then, another day of my experience, I've seen, was a lot of noise out back, and I thought they had a rag or cloth out there fighting. They had a cat. They literally tore the cat in half, and I was so sick, I went in the house. I said, "This is ridiculous and disgusting." But I'll do whatever it takes to help maintain these dogs and keep them down, even if it takes to put traps in my yard. I'm all for it, because I'm afraid half the time. My granddaughter, they used to come over and visit, but she doesn't anymore because she can't ride a bike around and can't go out, because her mother says she refused to let her go out in my yard. And so, I miss that a lot, but mainly, my mail is so important to me. And I work over here at Viden for twenty-four years, and I'm tired of those dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, Betty Washington.
I don't have really a personal story, but some people that couldn't come have told me about things that have happened to them. There's a member of my church who works at night, and she has to be very, very careful when she comes out of her house, between leaving her house and getting into her car, because there are dogs out there many times when she's trying to go to work. And I want to say, I'm not a person that's against dogs. I want to make that clear. But I'm really here in support of a lot of people that have talked to me about the fear that they have in their own yards and their own neighborhoods. And I heard someone say, "Some people like to go walking," and you know, that's an exercise that we all should get involved in, but they don't dare go out and walk, especially when they get to be about my age, in their sixties and above. We really should be out walking. So far, I haven't had a personal problem, but I'm here to speak on behalf of people who couldn't be here, who have shared some problems that they've had with the dogs that are loose. I have, I will say this, I have a sister, I wanted her to come. She loves dogs. She lives in town, as we say, and she keeps, they keep their dog on a lease, and so she didn't come. She loves dogs, but she said, "My heart goes out to people who fear dogs," because she loves them, because they've been so frightened by dogs that are loose.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have William Field.
I'm William Fields. I live at 2243 Leon Drive. I have never been bitten by a dog, but I am a walker. I walk three to four times a day. Couldn't tell it now because it's cold, but anyway, I do walk, and I've encountered dogs that have been unrestrained. And most of the time, they're, I've not been bothered by them, but I've had a couple of issues in ones that I've encountered. Never been bitten yet, but it is a terrible feeling when they come upon you, and you're left out there in the open with nothing in your hands. You dare not run from them, of course. You can outrun them. And so, I'm in support of this ordinance, because, another thing, when I think about all the reports that I had about dogs biting children, and about the county, how the population is growing in the county, and the population grows, you have more children come about. And I say about children, they don't look at dogs as threats. They look at them as pets, and that's where the problem comes. So I'm in total support of this ordinance of some kind about these little dogs. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Gwen Fields. Gwen.
My name is Gwendolyn Fields, and personally, I haven't had any problems with the dogs. Of course, I do walk, but as far as dogs, I haven't had a bad experience. But I am afraid of a dog that I'm not familiar with. So, you know, if this helps the ordinance, this is what I have to offer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Mark Hayes, and I'm a veterinarian here. I've been in Pitt County for over thirty years. I live in town, so my personal experience with dogs is pretty much based on my work. And we see, we see animals come in with some regularity from dog attacks, where a pack of dogs have come upon another dog, and they take them down, and they tear them apart. Sometimes we're able to put them together, and sometimes we're not. I mean, you take a pack of wild dogs, and it's, they're just, they're like wild animals, and they, they'll, they'll jump on something, and they'll just tear into it. And many times, those animals are dead. They're dead before we even get to see them, or the wounds are quite grievous. Every time I see one, it makes me fearful that... Every time I see one, it makes me fearful that if this had been a child who didn't know not to run, who, who wasn't with an adult, and if they ran from those dogs, it would not have been, it would not have been a good situation. And the, we hear about this happening in other parts of the country where children are killed by dogs, and it is my fear that this will happen. I think that I speak for the entire veterinary community when I say that we support this ordinance. That's the easy part. I think the hard part comes that this, this body is going to have to provide the additional funding to make it possible because current funding and the staffing is inadequate. Animal Control, from what I know, since the mid-2000s, have lost some of their positions. Those positions have not been filled due to funding limitations. So their staffing is not what it used to be. But the primary function of Animal Control is to keep the public safe from animals that are dangerous, and I'm not sure that they can do that now. Beth Sanchez is a client of mine. I've known Beth for a long time. Some months ago, Beth came to me, and she said, "I'm working on this project." And she shared with me some of the information that she had found. And it was eye-opening, to say the least. Since I live in Greenville, I'm not really familiar with this. We see the animals, but I'm not familiar with the human toll that this has taken or the number of bites that have been reported. But it made me more concerned after she shared some of the information with her, and I agreed to help her to have petitions signed, and we had hundreds of petitions signed. And most of the people that I talked to in my office, when we talked about this, many of them shared stories about having dogs come on their property. Sometimes it was a neighbor dog, but sometimes it was a dog they didn't know, but the dog was aggressive and threatening, and they were concerned about letting their children out or letting their grandchildren out. We have many, many nonprofits in this county that they try very hard to adopt animals, but it is not, it is not an easy task. And I think the thing we're gonna have to do is try to enforce an ordinance and to require pet owners to basically confine their pets and have penalties if they do not do so. I hope that you will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your assistance, Doc.
Carl Bonner?
Hello, I'm Carl Bonner. I live on the outskirts of Farmville. I've been in, riding bikes in Pitt County since the early 90s, ridden about a million miles with Dr. Bob Morrison. And what he's telling you, he's not joking. I've actually kidded him about having milk bone underwear. He's been hit by a dog so many times. I myself, in 1998, had a dog come out and chase me and got him, hit my front tire. I did a flip over him, cracked my helmet, and wound up with a big bump on my side that required a lot of medical care. So what Dr. Bob's telling you, I haven't, luckily, I haven't had to deal with what he's had to deal with, but I have been there. My wife also rides bikes and races triathlons, so I worry about her being out on her own. And I'd also like to tell you that we have dogs, grew up around dogs. I grew up dog hunting in Beaufort County, so I was worried that this ordinance might impact the local dog hunters, but from what I understand about the ordinance, the dog hunting is exempt. So I'd like to tell you that I'm in support of the ordinance, and I'd like y'all to be also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Marie Lewis?
Hello, everyone. I'm a little nervous.
You're fine. Go ahead.
Since this incident that happened to me happened, I'm nervous about what's going on with the dogs in Pitt County. My name is Marie Lewis. I've lived in Pitt County my whole life. I retired after 30 years of teaching in Pitt County. I retired last June. And in July, July 27th, I went out to ride my bike. I've ridden over 3,000 miles in the last two and a half years in Pitt County, and I never get more than 10 miles from my house. I try to ride 25 or 30 miles at a time. Well, on July 27th, on a Saturday afternoon at 4:30, I was riding on a road that I've ridden many times before, never been bothered by a dog. And I got about five tenths of a mile out of Grifton on Creek Shore Drive, Wiley Gaskins Road, and I heard a dog barking, and he made a break for me. He was at a service garage. There were about 25 cars. That's another issue. About 25 cars sitting in that yard, and that dog made a break for me, so I got off of my bicycle, and I put my bike between me and the dog. I had my cell phone with me, and I had a can of wasp and hornet spray. Well, as that dog made a break for me, and I'm standing there protecting myself, six more dogs came from under cars and attacked me. And they were in a semicircle around me. I was on the edge of the road, and they were past the center lane in the road. And I didn't know what I was gonna do. I had no idea, so I reached in my bag and picked my phone up, and I called 911. I was kinda embarrassed to call 911 because dogs are after me, but these things were baring their teeth at me, and every step I took, I would take a step to the right, and they would go at me. I would take a step to the left, and they would go at me. So I called 911, and Lenore County's 911 operator picked up because I was right on Creek Shore Drive. And when I explained my situation, she said, "Ma'am, I can't hear you. Your dogs are too loud." I said, "Ma'am, they're not my dogs. They're attacking me." When I told her where I was, she said, "I've gotta transfer you to Pitt County." I said, "Please, just call Grifton Police and get them to come out and get me." She transferred me to Pitt 911. Pitt 911 picked up my GPS on my cell phone, and she said, "You're on Wiley Gaskins Road." I said, "Well, I'm on Creek Shore Drive, but I'm out of town." She said, "I've gotta transfer you to the sheriff's dispatcher." And I said, "Ma'am, by the time they get here, I'm gonna be dead because these dogs are attacking me." She transferred me anyway. The sheriff's dispatcher, when she picked up, was so kind to me. She stayed on the phone with me. She didn't transfer, she didn't call for a Pitt deputy. She called Grifton Police, and Grifton Police came out and got me. Now, they had to put their car between me and the dogs and slowly drive down the road so that I could get away. On Monday, after that happened on Saturday, I followed up with the Grifton Police, and they said, "We can't do anything because it's out of our jurisdiction. I suggest you call the Animal Control." So I did. And when I called Animal Control, the lady I talked to said, "What do you want us to do?" I said, "I want you to do your job. I want you to go out and get those dogs." So they sent someone out to talk to the owner of the garage. He lives there also. But they didn't get those dogs. They didn't follow up with me. When I went to them on Thursday, August 1st, to follow up, they said, "Oh, we went and talked to the man, and he denied ownership of those dogs." Yeah, there were two black labs, two yellow labs, and three brindle pit bulls that came after me. So I said to the man, "Why didn't you pick the dogs up?" He said, "'Cause the man said, didn't say he wanted them picked up." But they attacked me. The man denied ownership, but they left those dogs there. Now, had I been a small child going by there, I would have been dead. What small child knows how to protect themselves from seven dogs in a semicircle around them with a bicycle? I've never been so scared in all my life. We need to do something. We've got to do something about the dogs. I don't ride my bicycle by there anymore, but when I ride my bike now, I have a gun strapped to my bicycle to protect me. I hate it, but what happens now if I shoot a dog? Am I in trouble if I shoot a dog that's attacking me if it belongs to someone? We gotta do something about these dogs. And you know, Animal Control didn't do anything about it. They should have picked those dogs up. If the dogs don't belong to someone, they should have picked them up. Now, I went back by that house again in September at night, after dark, on my car, and those dogs attacked my car tires, same dogs. Those dogs are still at that house. I've ridden by there on my car. I won't go back on my bicycle. But I've been back on my car, and those dogs are still there. They need to be in a pen. If that man wants to protect his property, I understand he's got a business. If he wants to protect his property, that's fine, but he needs to pin those dogs up. I went by that Saturday afternoon when it wasn't business hours. It was 4:30 on a Saturday, and that's probably why they attacked me then, and they've never attacked me any other time I've ridden by there. And I have ridden by there many, many times. It's one of my regular routes when I ride. But I'm scared to death to ride down that road on my bicycle now for fear that seven dogs are gonna come and attack me. And no, no Pitt County citizen should have to fear for their life when they're on a bicycle. No Pitt County citizen should have to carry a gun with them when they're out riding their bicycle for pleasure to keep from getting attacked by, by a pack of dogs, because that's what it was, was a pack of dogs that attacked me. So I am totally in support of, of an ordinance to keep dogs on a leash or keep dogs in a pen. And I have to thank Commissioner Webb because he's the reason that I found out about this meeting. He put me in contact with Beth Sanchez, and, and fate would have it, in October, I had my knees, both of them, replaced. And guess who was my occupational therapist? Beth came to my house. She was my occupational therapist. I really didn't need an occupational therapist, but she was required to come one visit, and that's who my therapist was, and I was telling her my story. And she couldn't believe it. She said, "I really would like for you to come and speak to the commissioners." But we've gotta do something.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, I have three names written on this one line. I've got Tyrus, Laura, and Raven.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everybody? I'm not gonna hold you long. I just wanted to talk about the dogs in my neighborhood.
Tell us where you live.
I live in, at 2142 Granite Court. And it's a certain dog that's in my neighborhood that me and my friends were trying to walk. We had started a little walking routine. And the first day we walked around there, he came out growling at us as if he was gonna attack us. So the next morning when we walked out, we actually was walking with sticks because we didn't feel safe. We seriously thought he was gonna attack us. And then my son, which I'm gonna turn it over to him, he's had some episodes with some dogs, too.
Come up, son.
Hi, my name is Tyrus Martin, and I've had some encounters with dogs. One of my friends, he has been bitten by a dog. They actually had to take him to the hospital. And there's two dogs in my neighborhood. I can't even walk to the bus stop because of that, so I have to go all the way around the neighborhood just to find another way to the bus stop.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Laura Lee, and I live at 2142 Granite Court. I'm elderly and disabled, and I have these dogs that keep coming around the house trying to bark and bite at me. Every time I start out in my power wheelchair, they'll run, and they'll show me their teeth, and they'll bark and bite at me. And then it's a big white and polka dot dog. I call him the fire dog, 'cause that's what it look like. And he loves to chase me for some reason. I don't know what it is. And then it's two brown dogs round there, and then we got some cats round there that is, I don't know what color they are, 'cause they got funny colors, look like they got the scratches or something. But I'm so sick and tired of them dogs and cats, I wish y'all would do something about them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next.
Take your time.
We have Ron Allison.
Good evening.
Good evening. Pull that back up. Doc's taking it.
Thank you for your time. My name's Ron Allison. I was on the Advisory Committee for Animal Control, and I wanted to make sure everybody knew what good work the commissioners had done in terms of having a great animal shelter, eliminating a gas chamber, having mandatory spay-neuter for all the animals that are adopted. So you've done a very fine job for the animals of this community, and the Animal Control Advisory Board has presented you a roadmap for additional steps to improve things. That represents hundreds of hours of volunteer time, so I hope you'll appreciate their efforts. Tonight, I wanted to mention just two things. One was that right now, if somebody loses their animal, their pet, there's at least nine different areas in Pitt County that that pet could be held. So there's almost no chance of somebody who loses their pet actually finding their pet within the 72-hour state mandate. So I would hope the commissioners, on their short list of things, would have a central database for these lost pets because I'm sure it's causing a lot of grief to people. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the animal bites. The number one cause of animal bites across the country, including Pitt County, are improperly restrained animals. So one of the things that you need to consider when you're making some regulations is that the fact is the number one cause of dog bites are restrained animals, improperly restrained. Second-leading, very close cause are roaming animals. Any animal that's roaming can cause these bites as well. So I'm hoping your regulations, which are needed, will include and encompass a comprehensive program, not just pick here, pick there, and do the good job that needs to be done. Because if you take these roaming animals and create improperly tethered animals, you're probably gonna create a lot more grief than you will relieve. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the last person we have signed up is Audrey, and I cannot read the last name.
My name is Andre Hnata. I live in Winterville, which is considered a county. My story is that my wife had 12 grown-up chickens and just three days-old baby chickens. And one day, we found a dog inside the chicken run. And the dog was very aggressive. All the chickens were dead. The dog was barking at me, showing his teeth. And Animal Shelter came and picked up the dog. And there are ordinances that can call the dog dangerous dog. And the Animal Control Supervisor claimed the dog dangerous. However, the Animal Control Board overturned that decision. I believe the current laws in effect are not enough. And what's worse is that the Animal Board was really biased and just made their own judgment on the rules, on the current rules which exist. So we do need extra ordinances to keep control of the animals which run free in the counties. Why should people in the city limits have different rights than the people in the county? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have signed up.
On behalf of the commissioners, I want to thank each and every one that's been here tonight, whether you got up and spoke or not. It's always a source of information that gives us something to work with. One thing that I have gleaned from this is the fact that I met with Beth for, I don't know, extended period of time back several months ago, and she took her time then to enlighten me about the problems that all of us are probably aware of, but I must admit that none of us have done anything about. The attention that has been drawn by your visit here tonight and by the presentation that Beth will make at a later port tonight is the catalyst, I hope, that will help solve, I don't know that we can eradicate all the problems. And I've concluded from all those that has talked here tonight that I don't know there's any good dogs at all. The dogs that I've heard about tonight were bad dogs, the ones that shouldn't have been where they were, should not have injured those children, should not have attacked those bike riders. And so I hope that this board, through the assistance that we're receiving from various and different groups in the community, from the assistance that we requested from the Animal Control Board, and from the presentation that Beth's gonna make here shortly, will give us a roadmap to see if we cannot make this a much safer and a much enjoyable community. that there were some people that wanted to talk that had to go to a job or work or somewhere else. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to go now, and as I said, Beth's presentation is going to be delayed a little longer to get some of this other work-related people out. But if you'd like to excuse yourself, feel free to do so. If not, you're welcome to stay and participate and see where we're going. With that having been said, everybody want to stay and listen? Very good. Mr. Manager, I believe you go to the airport next.
Give them a few minutes there.
Pardon?
I said you might give them a few minutes.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, let me ask this. Is there anyone that did not sign up that would, came in later and that would want to speak?
Yes.
All right, just a minute, I'll get to you. I thought so, and I... Come on. Come on up, please, sir. State your name and your address, please.
There's an elderly lady coming up first. She was...
Good evening. I am Dr. Joe Dixon. I'm pastor of the Great Mount Zion Christian Church here. I reside at 1202 Deuce Drive, which is north of the river off of Highway 33, Flemings School Road, Holly Pine subdivision. I want it to be understood, I'm for dogs. I grew up with them. We had them always in our family. But there are provisions that owners do need to undertake for the benefit of others. And to this Board of Commissioners, I appreciate all you do. I know your work is untiring like pastoring. You got to be, always be on the run and go. But I encountered an incident in my neighborhood in August of this year. It was two weeks into the new school system. I live, as you come into Holly Pine, I live in the first house, large white house there, and it's the school bus stop for the students. There's about seven or eight that come out every morning and evening and catch the bus and get off the bus. As fate had it that day, I was home. I got there maybe 30 minutes before the bus came. And I looked out where the bus stopped, and there was this rottweiler who had broken his chain. And he was standing right there where the kids get off. And, and I'm standing in my yard. I'm not going to ask who he is and what his name was because I don't know who he belonged to. So I, I sort of motioned toward the move, and he just grunted. So I said, "Okay, let me go to Plan B." I dialed 911. So I called the dispatcher. They switched me over to Animal Control. I told them the situation. I said, "There's a dog standing right here by my house where the kids get off the bus. They'll be here in about 20 minutes, and we do need someone to come and bring some assistance." So they said, "Okay." Now I stayed there. I waited. No one came, not right away. But I guess 20 minutes later, the dog decided, he just stood there and waited, and he finally moved on. So I followed him. He went into the other neighborhood. So I called back and I let them know the dog had moved and he's in a certain area. They said, "Well, we're sending someone out now." That's one, one situation that I wouldn't want nobody's child or adult to encounter because you don't know. I, I have a mother, one of the ladies in my church serves as a mother, who was bitten by a dog 20 years ago. She can only use two fingers out of her right hand. Inside her hand is a hole where, when the dog bit her, bit a big chunk of flesh out of her hand. She's a fine woman, a wonderful lady. And every time she says, "Pastor, I can't shake you with my right hand, I have to shake you with my left." We, you've heard from all of us, we're just asking you to give assistance to this request. And I know the Lord will bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did we miss you? I'm sorry, come around, please. Pull that down so we can hear you and give your name and...
I own a park off of Highway 33. I started in 1982. And when I had a renter to come in, we had a rule set back in 82. You had to either, you could have two pets. You keep them in the house, put them in a pen, or either if you go and walk them, walk them on leash. Because when you have other children and adults around the park, they could be bit. And I started that in 1982. Well, I have a park that developed on each side of me, D and N. And the one next to me was my brother-in-law's, but it's been sold about three times. And they don't have any control. I have a dog. I have a convenience store. And I have a dog that lays up there that doesn't have a collar on or anything. If a child was to walk up there and get bit, who would they sue? Me, because I own that convenience mall. It really disturbs me that the city can have something protection. And I have been to places and see dogs tied out on a chain, no water, no food, no nothing. And I have turned them in to the, not in my park, but other places. Because if you have a pet, I have a Maltese, I have a poodle. They stay in the house. I have a fenced-in backyard. They get out sometimes in the front, but they get right back in the backyard. You can control it, but we've got to have some laws by the county commissioners. And I just pray that you will say that we can have something that will protect our people and our children in Pitt County.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mr. Manager, I believe we're ready now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under item number eight on the agenda items report, the first item, we have a report tonight, an annual report from the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority. We have the Director Jerry Vickers. And I believe we have the Board Chairman John Banks is well other, I'm sorry.
Mr. Taylor.
I'm Don. Don Taylor's Board Chairman. He's to-be chairman, I guess next, next term. Thank you.
Come on up, John. All three of you want to talk at one time?
I used to get confused with my twin brother. But I don't think we got confused.
John, your twin brother, John.
Thank you for this opportunity. Last year at the annual brief to the commissioners, we outlined the changes and procedures that we have done within the authority. This year, the Airport Authority has been busy and progressive in a year in reshaping our vision and setting new goals for the future airport development. I'm going to list several, several things that we've worked on. First one is air service enhancement. And that's something that's always been, that people are wanting to know why we don't have a second airline. We partner with local government and other organizations to pursue a small community air service development grant last, last August. That was a half a million dollar grant. The airport had about $450,000, and we raised $150,000 within the community to go after an airline. Unfortunately, we did not get that grant. We have continued our efforts and discussions for, you know, to target an airline. And Mr. James sits on our, our board, and he knows every month I bring this subject up, so it's not something that we take lightly. John and myself and Max Joyner had the opportunity to tour a, a large airport one day, and we did that at no taxpayer money, by the way. And my question to them is, how did you attract a new airline? They have 147 flights a day going out, and they wanted an overseas flight. They could not get one. A local company gave $2 million to establish a guarantee revenue to an overseas flight. That flight's about 80% full, and they're looking at giving, getting two more flights. My, my point is that in order to attract a airline, we're going to have to come up with, with hard money. And it's probably going to be a million to a million and a half dollars. So unless we can get that to give to an airline, it's, it's going to be very difficult, or unless we get a grant. Under capital improvements, we're, we're extending runway 220. We're in the final phases of that. We're relocating utilities right now. And, and, and that extension is for a safety only, it's not to get larger aircraft in here. It, it's probably going to be 2015 because we had some issues with utilities that weren't marked, and so we're, we're behind on schedule, plus with the snow. Our master plan, we're, we're continuing to work on that for the next 20 years. Before we finish, we'll have, we'll talk to our airport stakeholders and also public input before we publish that with the FAA. Our hangar development, last year I told you that we had constructed a 10-bay tee hangar. We finished that in June 2013. Before we even started that hangar, we had a waiting list. We finished that, 10 new airplanes. We had another waiting list, and so we actually agreed to go on and build another one. That is probably going to be finished in, in, in March, and we have another waiting list. So that's 20 new airplanes that have come into Pitt Greenville Airport that supports the, you know, local taxes and things like that. Hangars are a magnet, you know, they, they bring revenue in, county taxes. They also help us in, in fuel, rents, and services. Under landed development, we identified 70 acres of one in the west part of, of the airport that we're going to try to develop. We tore down the Army Reserve building, which was 5.6 acres, and we're trying to market that. And we also have 90 acres across 33 that we're trying to do a solar farm with. Under operations, some of you might, might not know, but ECU has not flown in and out of Greenville in over 10 years. And last year we were successful in getting them to fly in and out. We were very aggressive in the opponents with the conference realignment, and we got the majority of the, of the new teams flying in and out of Greenville. We also hosted a Black Hawk helicopter squadron, which they love fuel, so that helped us out. We have a new corporate jet that's based here, and we're hoping that that's going to, that's going to help in, in possibly building a new hangar. We're also in discussion with a, with a new tenant that, that has three jets that we hope that eventually he might operate in and out of Greenville. We hosted two college interns pursuing aviation degrees. And the first time that this has ever happened, we had an, an authority retreat and planning for the future, and also to give Jerry, our director, some, some direction. In summary, Airport Authority is pressing forward on virtually all aspects of commercial and general aviation, and will continue hard work. On a personal side, this is my last year. I've been on here for eight years. I want to thank Mr. James for his support throughout, throughout my endeavor. John Banks, who is actually one of your picks for the county, he's been my co-chair for two years, and if everything goes accordingly, he will be the next chairman. I thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here. And the chairman's pretty much outlined most of the things we've got going on, so I'll try to move through these rather quickly. Page up. Go back and forth. Okay, that's a lot of moving parts there. There we go. Just to summarize, I'm going to talk a little bit about some fast facts, kind of refresh a little bit about the chairman, talk about commercial air service, and then close out with some capital improvement projects. The airport comprises about 1,000 acres, and interestingly, about half of that is wetlands, so that presents challenges for us in development and mitigation. We do have two runways, and we are capable of handling large jets. As the chairman mentioned, all of ECU's teams flew out for their games this year, and all their opponents flew in. Just want to quickly show you this economic development impact slide that was done from a study by the state of North Carolina a couple of years ago. And really, the bottom line there, the airport has about a $98 million impact to our community each year. Our commercial air service, as you know, we have US Airways Express, the one airline flying five flights a day to and from Charlotte. Our current operations, we have one jet a day plus the four turboprops. And obviously, one of our goals is to increase that ratio of jets to the turboprops. Just looking at our passenger traffic trends over the last several years, you can see we set an all-time record at the airport in 2010, and we've remained relatively flat since that time. But if you look across the board now at airports across the industry, commercial air service travel is at, is at a stagnant point at this time. Our prime goal, as we mentioned, is to expense, expand and enhance our level of air service. And we've got two different approaches for doing that. One is working with our existing airline, US Airways Express. Oh, by the way, you may have heard, US Airways has now merged with American Airlines, so the name US Airways will eventually go away. So we work with an existing airline to try to increase the flights, increase the proportion of turboprops or jets to the turboprops. As the chairman mentioned, we also aggressively are pursuing, are pursuing a second airline. As I mentioned, I think this merger will be good for us because I think we have a lot of people in our community that are brand loyal to American from their years in Raleigh. And hopefully, with that merged brand, we'll get those folks back at Pitt Greenville. Turn to capital improvement projects. The board is very aggressive and continuing to modernize and upgrade our infrastructure. Predominantly, capital improvement funding for the airport comes from the FAA. And also, the airport board has funded out of airport funds a number of local capital improvement projects. Most significant we have is the runway 2-20 extension. If I can get this mouse to move. 2-20 runs perpendicular on that diagram. What we've done over the last two years, we've done a year and a half environmental analysis to determine what the impact would be of expanding that runway. We've also done something we've never done before, went out of the neighborhoods, our neighbors held public meetings, open meetings, one-on-one, and small group meetings to make the community, our airport neighbors, aware of what our future plans were. And in part of the environmental analysis, if you look at this chart, we identified 16 homes that could potentially be in a noise problem area, and we're in the final stages of acquisition there. We're going to acquire eight of those 16 homes, with the others choosing not to move. Look at the other end of the runway, moving out toward Greenville Terrace and Oak Ridge area, or Oak Estates. We've got some properties to either purchase or obtain easements. If you look in all those colored areas there, those are really properties that have trees that penetrate the FAA's airspace. Our goal is to get easements and get those trees down. The chairman mentioned the first stage in this runway extension is to take all the utilities that ran across the old Highway 33 roadbed and locate them 1,000 feet off the end of what will be the expanded runway. I think I just turned that off, but basically, you got another slide up there? I think you got it off, Mike. I think I'm at the end of this slide. But by the time we get through with this runway extension, you know, it's going to be a $10.2 million project. Again, it was done to do a new safety improvement by new FAA regulations, was not done to acquire larger airplanes. In fact, when we do this runway extension, there's not an airplane in the world today we can't get in now that will be able to get in when we extend the runway. So we're happy to provide you an update on the airport and be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, Mr. James.
I don't need to tell you the leadership that we have out there is the reason that all of this is taking place. And you know, I, I've been on this board for 30 years. When I came on this board, John, the biggest complaint was out there, those people that lived out there, the noise. But now, Melvin, we are buying up those houses that these people complain, and those that want, all of them, if they want to sell, we're buying them. A lot of them have chose to stay there. So that's really, they have really helped this Board of Commissioners out because now there's no complaints as far as that is concerned, which I want to thank. And John Banks is going to be here next year. We've got leadership, Paul and Donna, and we are blessed, believe me, we are. And I tell Jerry that quite often. We've got so much to be thankful for now than what we, Jimmy, have had some years back. Thank you so much.
Way up, and then Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, would it be possible, instead of having to go after a second airline... or some more of a destination stop than Charlotte? That's the one thing I hear, is that it would be nice if there was something that went to Atlanta, which I think a lot of people were hoping Delta, I think, would come in because that being their hub. Do they only go to the hub from the small airports, or are they willing to branch?
You're speaking in terms of American?
Of American, yes, sir.
If you look at American, their largest hubs, east of the Mississippi would be like Chicago, Laguardia, and those are not, we have a lot of people go to Chicago, but those are not hubs within about 500 mile range that really fit the profile. We've done the study on air service, next best airline and hub combination, so we think we know what that is, and that's what we're going after.
Okay, thank you.
But is there an opportunity somewhere in the future if we grow? Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Gash and then Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to express my appreciation for you and your current board for everything you are doing for our airport. I served on that board several years ago prior to Mr. James, and I know that some of the issues that we had then, your current board has worked on and made some positive changes, some positive suggestions. And the other thing that I was very pleased at is that you say that we now have the ECU athletic traffic. That was a major issue several years ago, and I'm glad to see that that partnership we have with ECU has materialized so that they're now using our airport.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gash. Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, I want to thank you also for your proactiveness and working with the homeowner. And Mr. James talked about that a few minutes ago, about the bow situation on the noise problem that they've had over several years. Now, do we still, do you still have this federal grant money, or are you still looking at some other potential homes to take care of in terms of buying them out? And I know you talk about easement, cutting down the trees to help with this situation. So how are we standing in terms of future looking?
Well, in that first phase, I showed you the 16 homes, that was the first phase. Those were homes that could be impacted by noise. And if you looked out at the end across 33 and around Greenfield Terrace and out in the Oak Grove area, those are really properties that have trees that are too tall. Now, some of those are close enough in to be eligible to sell, and a few of them have, but the main issue is to get the easement for the trees. And I can't overemphasize, in terms of selling property, this is a totally voluntary project. They don't have to sell, but we really need to get those easements to get those trees down.
Thank you, gentlemen. John, you want to say something? Thank you. Appreciate all y'all's.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the items report is concerning performance measurement. The county has published its latest mid-year report, July through December 2013, and we have provided you a copy of this. We also continue to provide and publish what we call the Performance Scorecard, which is a colored brochure that we carry around to make presentations on to show, basically, it's kind of a stoplight analysis, green light, red light, yellow light, as to whether where different departments are meeting their performance measurements or not. That's all I have on that.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Vote. Okay, next.
Next, you have the tax collection report from Kathy Booker, your tax collector for January 2014.
Good evening. The Pitt County fiscal year-to-date combined collection rate for real and personal property as well as registered motor vehicles is 92.57, an increase as compared with the rate one year ago of 91.75, and we continue to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary enforcement remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes.
How much to approve?
Second.
Vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dwayne.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Happy for you, a good news item. It is something that Pitt County has become accustomed to, and we are grateful that we have recently received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association that Pitt County has received its 17th consecutive award for the distinguished budget presentation award. This is proof that the county's budget document satisfies nationally recognized standards, and we had to prove proficient in the four areas that are recognized. Just want to accept this award on behalf of the manager, our budget staff, as well as all the departments that participate in the budget document and the presentation.
Appreciate the continued good work.
Mr. Chairman, can I say saying that, you know, we're getting used to this. It is not to make this look like it's just something that happens every year to every county government budget office, it doesn't, or finance office. And for to have done that 17 years straight is really outstanding, and I think everybody recognizes that, but.
In fact, the one that contributed greatly was in the back.
I see, how about that grinning? But thank you so much, Dwayne, for carrying the banner.
Thank you. All right, what's next, Mr. Staley?
Next on the agenda is my reporter's manager's report on item A, announcing the next meeting dates of the board for March 10th and March 24th at 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, respectfully. Item B will remind the board of the NACA, which is the National Association of Counties, the legislative conference, it's coming up March 1st through 5th, it'll be in Washington, DC. Right now, we have Chairman, Vice Chairman Webb registered to go, Commissioner McLawhorn, the county attorney, and myself, and we've already started making appointments with our members of our congressional delegation, and we'll be there for the conference and for that purpose.
Scott, can you say something on that real quick?
Yes, sir.
You know, one thing we're really going to be pushing is the federal government's responsibility as it's concerned with mental health and the reauthorization of the mentally ill offender treatment program to help get mentally ill offenders out of our county jails, which are not adequate to provide their mental health needs. And that's something that Dr. Johnson has worked on, Melvin has worked on, as well with the association locally and nationally. And so it's something that we're really going to try to hammer home with our congressional delegation, that we need to start transitioning people into treatment and not just into jail those who have specific and serious mental illnesses.
Next, item C, Golden Leaf, regards to the county's community-based grants making proposal. This is a collaboration between ECU, PCC, Pitt County Schools, and it's a submittal for what is being called the Advanced Manufacturing Innovation Academy. Want to report to you that that has now moved to the full and final stage of being asked to submit a full proposal that'll be due on March 7th back to Golden Leaf, and we're one of the few initiatives that are being, well, not the few, but one of a select number of initiatives that are being asked to actually make a full proposal. We're not to the point of full funding yet, this is a $1 million funding if and when it is approved, but we just wanted to announce that we are moving, continuing to move in the right direction on that. Item D, regards to the Department of Social Services in regards to their FNS, which is their food nutritional services, their caseloads, I believe you've probably seen the media on this, just want to report to you that the department did meet its deadline of February 10th to process cases, I believe that were more than 90 days old, and there's another deadline coming up for March 31st. Our interim director, Earl Merritt, informs me that he does not plan on Pitt County being on the state's list for counties being noncompliant, and we are continuing to work those, come up with internal plans to make sure that we continue to be compliant and continue to work on our backlog that exists otherwise. Item E, regards the county's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I was asked to announce that the Community Schools and Recreation is updating the county's master plan. They've received grant funding to do this, and they're currently in the process of doing a telephone survey, so if anybody does receive a call on this, please take a few minutes out to help in identifying the different needs of our Parks and Recreation facilities and offerings here in Pitt County. And Mr. Chairman, with that, that's all I have.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm ready for the acceptance of items on the consensus agenda.
Second.
Ready to vote? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I may could not have come in.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank this board and especially our manager pertaining to working with the social service department in helping us to take and do what we have done, because if you hadn't have done what you did, given us extra employees, part-time employees, we would not have been able to have done what we have done. So I certainly, on behalf of the social service board, want to thank all of you for helping us out.
Just to be clear, we're not totally out of the woods yet, but we're, the food stamp issue behind us.
We are on the right road now.
Correct.
You might be asked to do a little bit more.
Correct.
Remember that.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Okay.
10, one, Beth, I've got one more thing, we'll be to you. Scott?
Yes, this item is a consideration of exception to the county's personnel policy dealing with inclement weather and our emergency closing policy. Vice Chairman Webb asked for this to be put on the agenda, and I'll defer to him to comment on this.
Glenn? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was just because this was an extenuating or an extraordinary circumstance with the employees having to take personal time because of the snow days, and this just merely asked that time be restored to the employees.
I guess if I can elaborate on the policy, the policy as it reads right now, if county offices are closed for a portion of the day, then the employees basically do not leave, do not use any of their leave time, we just consider it an emergency closing, they're held harmless for, if we do a two-hour delayed opening or close two hours early, they're not held harmless. However, the way the policy reads, if we close for an entire day, then they're required to use personal leave. That can be their vacation, their comp time, holiday, any type of banked leave. On the 29th and 30th of January, we, like most, like other institutions, the city of Greenville, the county, were closed two days back to back, and the reason that this has been considered possibly for an exception is because, since I've been here for 12 years, we've never had an instance where we were closed for two days back to back. We have had where I've closed for one full day in one year, then maybe a year or two later, later we closed for a full day due to a snow event. So the policy does allow for an exception under, if you look on page 42 in the very last section, number four, it talks about that the, it does say that you'll meet within 48 hours to consider an exception, but if we decide to put it on this agenda, and if you were to do this, we would need to, we would probably ask that you consider giving the employees two extra days of vacation. There are some employees who actually took that time off because they didn't have the leave banked up, so they took leave without pay. Some employees were able to take leave balances they did have banked up. So in essence, if you were to lean in this direction, only as a one-time exception, because it was back to back two days in a row, that two extra days of vacation would be given. It could be said, lay it all out, it could be said that because we granted the employees, you granted the employees prior to this as merit compensation, two extra days for those who met their performance scores and goals, they were already given this, but if you look at that way, they were given it and you took it away because of the two snow days, and they basically didn't get it, so.
We are very appreciative of our employees, what they do, but I have a little concern about a change in your policy and what it would do to you later on, Scott. Did you speak to that, or you and I did when we fixed the agenda, but how do you feel about that, Nick?
I feel that if the county offices are closed for a full day, say next year, for a full day, we require the employees then to use personal leave. This is, again, in the 15 years that this policy's been in effect since 1999, we've never had two days back to back, so I think that was kind of Vice Chairman Webb's thinking if I.
That's correct, and it was along the lines of the merit pay where we give them two days and then pull it back because of the snow, and in 15 years, it's never happened. And so with that being an extraordinary circumstance, just allow the employees to keep their days or their merit rates, basically.
And this would be only for employees who were scheduled to work. If you were scheduled to already be off or wasn't your shift, you would not then be given this time, only if you were scheduled to be working those two days.
That's giving some benefit, and others not benefited.
Well, the others would not have been here to be affected. It's restoring the ones that were negatively affected.
Correct.
By the event.
Beth, and then Jimmy.
And this is just a one-time proposal for this.
It's not a change to the rule, it's an exception for this one time.
Thank you.
Mr. Gash.
It is a one-time exception, but it is establishing a precedent, so that if this occurred again in the future, then we would be expected to do the same thing. My question, Scott, does this really, if we approve this, does this really cost us any out-of-pocket money?
No.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
I have a question.
Tom.
So it's no out-of-pocket money, but does that mean that the employees, had they been here those two days, they would have done nothing? There is a loss, there's a loss of work, is that correct?
Correct.
And we pay overtime when we ask them to work overtime, including salary people, right? And if they, if we compensate them, we usually compensate them at time and a half. So if you're going to do anything, why don't you ask them to work an extra hour or two per week until they make up the lost time, the 16 hours, do that over eight weeks or 10 weeks or some period, then you accomplish the work, but you don't pay them for that time, the same as with the compensation, you know, with the time and a half.
The policy does allow that, if an employee is able to come in early and work through lunches, they can try to make the time up if there's work to be done early and also during that lunch period.
That's done with your schools now, they make this extra time, oh, and then this extra time that they have made, then that is added on to it. I kind of feel like Mr. Coulson here, that, and who is being, you know, you've got to treat all of your people alike. Are we doing that?
Yes.
To pull the employees, that they know you're not rewarding some, and.
What you have is you have people who were given a merit bonus because we couldn't give them money because of the budget, and so they were given these two days of vacation. Now that two days has been taken back because it snowed.
Yeah.
And the people who were unaffected by the snow would not get this benefit, so you're treating everybody alike, but it's just the ones who would have had to work will get basically their time back that they would have, that they had.
A payback, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Not money.
Melvin and then Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think it's only fair to treat our employees in a way that is very appropriate in terms of their work habit. So I think that what Glenn is proposing sounds to me like it's a fair way of doing it. I just want to ask the, our legal advisor, was there any legal ramification in there in terms of how it might be from a legal standpoint?
No, I don't anticipate any legal issue arising from what's being proposed. I do say that it would create some precedent if you have a similar exceptional event in the future, that it might be brought back to the board to argue that it should be treated similarly, but we haven't had an event like that in the last 15 years, and so if you're asking, can you do this from a legal perspective, yes, you can.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to support a motion if.
I'm motion approved.
Glenn makes a motion, I will second the motion that in this particular case, because of extenuating circumstances, that we not take vacation time for my employees.
Motion made and seconded, but Mancy, you want to speak?
Yes, question was raised as to whether this had any financial impact, and answer was no, but I do want to say it potentially could indirectly. If an employee were to leave the employment of the county, we do pay up to 240 hours of leave balance and vacation pay, so technically, if they hadn't used these two days in the near future or between now and the point they leave, then yes, at some point, we could have to pay them the two days, but for the most part, no, it doesn't have a direct cost on the, to the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Tom, excuse me.
Well, I want to go back to what I said before, and that has to do with, there is a financial impact, because that work that they didn't do has eventually got to be made up, and if it can be made up in normal hours with no cost to the county, then I'm going to suggest that we're overstaffed. Now, I know in the private sector, most of the companies that I deal with, including my own, we've worked this last weekend and a weekend, two weekends before to make up for our lost time. You know, what government has, gets a lot of criticism because of the things that we do that the private sector can't afford to do. I can't vote for this.
I will say, in regards to DSS as one agency, they were kind of forced to because they had their NC FAST crisis, but they did come on the weekends and work over weekdays, mornings and nights.
That's right, I know, that's what concerns me, that. They work there. Any further discussion?
Yet, Mr. Chairman.
They got comp time for that, didn't they?
Over 40.
Yeah.
If I must speak, I'm up here in that I am retired in my regular employment.
If I must speak, I'm up here in that I am retired in my regular employment. I'm up at this building quite frequently, and what I found in this particular case was that the governor of North Carolina put us in this position of saying that employees did not have to work. And I feel like that we should not go against the governor's ruling with this regard because of unusual circumstances, and the governor came on TV more than once saying that it was an exceptional situation, and that in terms of county and state employees, that this was an unusual circumstance. And I believe we should follow the leadership of the governor in this case.
Thank you, Dr. John. If there's no further questions, our discussion, let's vote. Thank you. All right, Beth, I believe you're up next. Before Ms. Chanstaz gets into this, she was kind enough to bring to us some background information, material, of course, Billy, I didn't mean to leave you out, but I guess a union is a union, isn't it? So. But we've heard the issue being discussed here tonight, which has been very emphatic from one perspective that I have, in essentially what we need to do to review and to do something about this issue. If that hasn't been said, Beth, it's your game.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss the impact of roaming dogs and the need for a canine control ordinance in Pitt County. All of the stories that relate are actual stories or experiences of citizens in this county, unless I say otherwise, and all the dogs that you will see are roaming dogs that we found in the county, again, unless I tell you otherwise. This happened in Pitt County. A deputy arrives to a home in the county, and paramedics are on the scene. A person is lying on the floor with significant injuries to his chest, his groin, and his forearms. The individual has been attacked by his neighbor's dog. The dog was not current on his vaccinations. The individual left by rescue divided medical. Mr. Eugene Cameron is a 65-year-old man from Person County. He was found naked with his clothes balled up beside him under a carport of a friend that he was house-sitting for over Memorial Day weekend. He sustained significant upper arm injuries in which he bled out from. There were bloody paw prints on the ground beside him. He was killed by the neighbor's dog. Six months ago, I was house-sitting for my neighbor, like Mr. Cameron, and I found myself standing in my neighbor's kitchen, surrounded by animal control officers and deputies. Two pit bulls had busted onto their locked porch and killed their family pet, Apollo. I had called the week prior, because I'm a neighborhood watch captain, and a neighbor had called concerned about these dogs roaming, were scared to come out of her house, and I called when I found those dogs in the neighborhood. The deputy told me that morning that this was his third dog call that had occurred. It was only 10:30 in the morning. That was my first area of concern. He stated that they have over 15, 30, sometimes 40 calls regarding roaming dogs every week in Pitt County. He expressed his frustration to me that there was no ordinance on the books to help citizens until something like this occurred. Now, I was told by the animal control officer that because the cat was dead, the dog did not have to go to animal control and be quarantined for rabies evaluation. He said that those dogs, when the owners got there, could take the dogs home without restriction. Lucky, he said, you're awful lucky that it was witnessed, plus if it hadn't been seen, you couldn't have proved that those dogs had killed that cat. And I thought, that doesn't make any sense. Here they are with the dog, the cat, dead, and those dogs would not leave that porch. He said, but you wouldn't have been able to prove it. I asked the animal control officer, who does animal control work on behalf of? The citizen or the dog? When the county staff went to remove those dogs from that porch, and keep in mind, they said earlier that those dogs could have left without restrictions. The dogs attacked the deputy and the county staff. Deputy had to kill the dog, took two shots to kill him, and they were able to restrain the other dangerous animal. I want you to think about that. I was house-sitting, by this time, it's about 11:30, the dogs were not leaving. I had guys with guns and catch poles when I said, well, go ahead and get them before the neighbor comes. And they're like, we don't know what those dogs are going to do. They want to let those dogs out. My kids would have gone over there at about 11:30 or 12 o'clock to feed Apollo and skim that pool. That porch where those dogs were are next to that pool. As I listened to the deputy then explain to the animal control officer why he had to shoot that dog, I was concerned that this discussion was even happened, after all I saw was dogs jump up on French doors with the deputy saying, they're coming in, they're coming in, and all you saw was blood, sweat, and foam from a dog's mouth. So I was questioning, as he was explaining, that the deputy said it was his responsibility to take care of himself first, so that he could protect and serve the people and protect the people that were on the property. So again, I wondered, as I sat there listening to that conversation, who does animal control work on behalf of? In the fall, I met with Michelle Whaley, the animal control manager, Lisa Overton, the assistant county attorney, and also members of the animal control advisory board, Linda Mazur and Melanie Bryan, who was also my neighbor. They discussed the chronic problem of roaming dogs in this county, the numerous calls every day that comes in there where they're not able to assist people, asking for help because of dogs that are roaming, whether it's on their property, whether it's a neighbor's dogs when they're just trying to walk. Then they said, if you only knew the number of bites that were happening in this county, how their budget and staff had been cut, they had no resources to even help citizens, and that there was no ordinance to give them any authority to address the dogs that were roaming at large. I sat there and I said, how in the world can this be happening? I said, why aren't the commissioners doing something? And this just is me, I hadn't thought about animal control until that day. This was not something on my mind that I studied, animal control issues. So the county staff, they said that they had, the county staff had presented animal control ordinance proposals before to this board, but they were never able to get it passed. That day, sitting in their office, after listening to them talk about their issues, they felt that it would take a grassroots effort from citizens before change would ever occur in Pitt County. I've done a lot of research and had a lot of material that was provided to me by animal control, and as I read the research, most of it is inside your packet in the appendices, that the need for an animal control ordinance, the need for the staffing and the shelter space has been researched, it has been drafted, and it has been presented to this board prior to and after the fact, when y'all assumed responsibility of this shelter from the city of Greenville in 2002. In 2002, Commissioner Coulson asked for the staff to explore leash laws. In March of the next year, Phil Dickerson presented multiple different options you could have for control of the animals. In October of that year, Michelle Whaley and the Animal Control Advisory Board discussed an animal control nuisance-based ordinance. The next year, she presented the ordinance again. Finally, in 2005, Michelle Whaley and the Animal Control Advisory Board brought back the animal nuisance ordinance, and it was adopted. But there's a problem with this document, with the animal nuisance ordinance. It's either poorly worded, it's being misinterpreted by staff, it's either not enforceable for staff, or maybe it's not being enforced. Whatever the reason, for some reason, it has not been an effective piece of legislation to help citizens when they have needs with roaming dogs, nor has it been able to assist animal control or the Pitt County Sheriff's Department, their staff, to be able to help citizens. Now, in January of this year, the Animal Control Advisory Board presented the strategic plan, and they did a great job, as they do. Other counties that I spoke with praised Pitt County's animal control and their adoptions. They spoke about their animal shelter issues, the successes with their adoption programs, and I listened to their goals about wanting to increase the live release rates, address animal cruelty and welfare, improve education, and increase their staff and funding, staff and funding to meet state standards. But as I sat here listening that day, after all the discussions that had taken place in the fall, there was a glare and omission in that document. What about public safety? What about all the nuisance calls that they told me and that I had researched that they got every day regarding these animals? Where were the bite statistics? Where were the graphs of the bites that are recurring? They were not in that document. The issue of not being able to help citizens because of the lack of an animal control ordinance. Again, I sat here and as I left this room, I wondered again, what is the mission and what is the priority of animal control, and who do they work on behalf of? For 12 years, the issues are not only still present, but now they've increased in severity and magnitude because now you have more people, which means you have more dogs. And so as a citizen, I stand before you, because this has been done by your county management staff as well as your department heads. Not only am I standing here, but over 1,000 petitions that were signed. We only did that for six weeks, we just had a goal of 1,000, representing all six districts, the majority from rural areas. We had people, businesses that put out the petitions, neighbors who took it to their friends, other citizens who came and called and wanted to pass it out to their neighborhoods, and Billy and myself, talking about Pat and Charlie being our feet, went and knocked on a lot of doors. And we tried to get a representative sample. We didn't want it just to be in a room with 50 people or 100 people. We went and knocked on doors, and we tried to hit about 10 or 15 in each area. We went to subdivisions, we went to mobile home parks, we went to homes that were on secondary roads as well as on highways. We never knew whose door we were knocking on and what they were going to say, but what stunned us was that almost everybody had a story. So tonight, I want to present the other side of animal control, which is public safety. So what's a roaming dog? That's been asked. I use the word roaming because at-large is the legal term, which means any dog that's off your property, and people were getting confused with large breed dogs, that's why I called them roaming. So how are dogs affecting people? I think the people who came tonight pretty much told you how. They're harassing kids at bus stops. You have homeowners who are afraid to leave their home because of dogs are on their yard, under their bushes, under their cars. They're being aggressive toward people who are running with their dogs and pushing a baby stroller. They're tearing up deck furniture. They're busting into trash cans at businesses because these dogs are hungry. They are not in, it's not lady and the tramp out there, these dogs are suffering. One dog went in to attack the homeowner's dog on their property, knocked down their elderly mother, and she had to be hospitalized because of a dog that went on to attack her own dog. An overwhelming number of people, even if they had issues with this ordinance, because not everybody agreed with it, they had questions, but they listened. They believe that if a citizen feels unsafe, threatened, or if there's an unwanted dog on their property, they should be able to have the ability to call animal control and have someone come out and assist them. So many citizens, which shocked me, because again, I had no idea this was going on until we knocked on doors. Citizens are angry, they're frustrated. You have whole communities where they feel hopeless because they, we have called and called and no one helps us, we had nowhere else to go. And like me, I was just baffled at why this was happening. So what happens, because I know some of you live in the, as commissioners, live in the municipalities. I want to tell you what happens when a citizen in an unincorporated area calls. First, you call animal control, like I did that day, and they tell you, well, I'm going to read. Unfortunately, there is no leash law in Pitt County, so we do not have any authority to pick up dogs that are roaming freely. If your dog is off your property, it is not roaming freely. It is either on someone else's property, or it's on public space that we all have to share, and there have to be rules for all safety on that public space, be it a road. You can file a potential dangerous dog report. That's good if you know who owns the dog, but if you don't know what dog is coming after, you can't file a report. Some people are fearful to file a report because of retaliation of their neighbors, and then you've got those who don't want to declare a dog dangerous. They just want to be able to walk by someone's house and not have the dog come out. Just keep your dog on your property. The next option was a trap. A trap is great if the dog takes up at your house and it frequents there, it's kind of taken up and wants to live with you, but it doesn't do anything for someone who's been chased on a road, because that trap has to be put on your property. Then if, say, if you want to accept a trap, often there's a waiting list. Some people said they've been told two, three, four, five weeks, and they say, what good is that when I've got the dog growling at me right now and I'm trying to get into my car to go to the doctor? Then you have to be financially responsible for that trap, and it's $200. If that dog happened to be on my property I called about, which it wasn't, we financially could afford it, but I would not want to put, be responsible for a $200 trap so if some kids are running around playing, decide to take a trap, and then I'm stuck with a bill. Citizens that feel, the other thing about a trap is that if you have a trap, it can't be set. What some patients, excuse me, I'm a therapist, people told me was that you cannot set the trap over the weekend or over holidays, because animal control cannot come and pick up that dog. And one man said, do you know what I was told? I finally caught that dog and was told that I had to let it go, because if I didn't feed it, I could have animal cruelty charges put against me because it was during the weekend. Now, citizens, the other option you can do is to contain the dog. Citizens that feel threatened or wary of a dog, they're not going to feel comfortable tying up that dog. That day, I was told, I said, if someone could just come out and grab it, they've got tags, we just want to get the owner, maybe they don't know their dogs are out. But that wasn't an option. But I was told by animal control that I could do it and bring it to my house, tie it up, and then be there when an officer could come. I had to be on site for them to pick up the dogs. After everything that was going on, I actually thought, well, how about if I just put the dogs in my car, because I was on my way to Raleigh with the kids, and I can drop them off for you? I mean, that's about what you felt, if I could help you any other way. Let me just drop them to you and save the officer a trip out. But my mom did not raise a fool. I was not going after two dogs that had already been threatening at a neighbor earlier. Now, the next thing you're told, and I quote, "If you believe a leash law is needed in Pitt County, I would encourage you to contact your county commissioner with your concern." Well, here we are. So what I did was I asked, actually, it was suggested to me when I asked about the bites, I just asked for, well, just give me a computer readout of the bites. You don't get a computer readout of the bites. They were in a tote in a barn behind animal control. It was mentioned by Lisa Overton, why don't you get the request for service call so she can look at those too? Now, keep in mind, I would have known any of this existed had your county staff not directed me with this information. What I did with the, when we got the totes, we went home and we started counting, and it was overwhelming. 4,014 citizens from 2009 to 2012 called and requested to have a trap delivered or to have a dog picked up. Maybe they had contained it, or they had caught it in a trap. This only represents those calls where someone asked for a trap or to have a dog picked up. It does not include any of the calls regarding cats or if they called like me and said, I'm sorry, I'm not comfortable tying up that dog. A trap is not going to help me. I don't know who to file a dangerous dog report to. And keep in mind, a week later, remember where I was standing. Some, when the officers get there, some people refuse the trap because of the financial responsibility. If animal control arrives to retrieve a dog and that dog breaks away and goes over into the neighbor's yard, onto the field, animal control can't get it. Now they no longer have legal authority to get that dog. If a citizen traps or contains a dog, finally, and then they call and there's no room in the shelter, can you imagine, you finally get a dog and the animal control tells you, to no fault of their own, there's no room in the inn, and now if it's a weekend, you got to let that dog go? Think about that. We took, with the help of planning, the planning department, we took the 950 calls from citizens from the year 2010, and we took their addresses, and these are citizens here in Pitt County that have called for help, and you can see the distribution is all over the county. On the budget ordinance that was just passed by the county this year, animal control reported four animal nuisance complaints, and I go back to that nuisance complaint ordinance. Next year, the goal is to have three complaints. During the same time period, Pitt County Sheriff's Office had 165 animal complaints reports that were filed by deputies. Out of the top 10 calls reported to the City of Greenville Police Department, animal complaints ranked every month consistently in the year of 2013 as number two and number three. How can a county of over 170,000 people, with over 39,000 dogs to be estimated at the low end, with over 1,000 calls being placed in a year for traps or for dog pickups only, how can you only have four reported animal complaints? Now, one thing that I do not know, if these are just complaints that went before a court system that was suggested to me today, or are these really just from the nuisance complaint forms? So I ask again, it doesn't make any sense. The nuisance ordinance is not working, for whatever reason. And my other question is, is the burden of proof too difficult for the person? And my other question is, is the burden of proof too difficult for the person who's trying to issue the complaint? Again, I'll refer back to that day when they said, "It's a good thing someone witnessed it, or you wouldn't be able to prove it." Now, these are dogs that are found roaming in Pitt County. We were actually at least country kitchen, talking to a bunch of men. I made it out alive. And he said, "If you want to see dogs, get in your car, get a cup of coffee, and go driving." And that's what we did. These dogs are found at gas stations, convenience stores, the Family Dollar store outside of Belvoir, veterinarian offices. We found them at churches. And we actually talked with customers and employees who were afraid, they said they were afraid or wary of going inside. And Ms. Buck, who was here, that's the little dog that's on the porch. And let me tell you, she's mean with a broom when a dog's coming after her. Now, when we saw a customer drive up to her store and got out and started looking around, and she was hesitating, and she decided to get back in her car. Ms. Naomi lost business that day because of a dog. There are home daycares in the county that are keeping kids while people go to work that are unable to let kids out to play. I actually called a daycare, called three that day, and every one of them within a five-mile radius said, "It's amazing you called, because we haven't been able to let the kids out in a week." They have fences. Some of those dogs are starting to crawl over the fence. Over in District Two by Old Pack Tollis, one daycare had a consultant come out because she was scared of her liability keeping kids in that neighborhood. And they recommended that she put up another fence four feet away. So maybe if the dog got over the first fence, they had time to get inside before it got over the second fence. These are kids at a daycare. A group home recently called because there were stray dogs kind of roaming around all day, and they couldn't let their kids out. And during a change of shift, the dogs were still there. And they were a little menace, and they weren't sure what those dogs were going to do. People were scared to leave work and get out of their car and come into work. So they called animal control, and they were told, "Dogs are allowed to roam in the county. But if you can contain those dogs, I can send out an officer." Now roaming dogs are treeing hunters in tree stands. And everybody said, "The hunters are going to kill you." But it was amazing when I met with hunters, that they said, "You know what? We've seen a difference in this county in the last 10 years." I asked the hunter, "If you're in a tree stand, you've got a gun, why don't you kill the three dogs that were underneath of it?" And he said, "You just don't want to kill a dog." He said, "I had my buddies come and get it away with a four-wheeler." And then he said, "Then I thought about it. I should have shot them, because what happens when somebody else is out there hunting and those dogs come out after them?" One hunter said, "I hope this thing passes, because we've got our own hunting dogs being killed, and some people are shooting our dogs, mistaking it for the stray dog that's been roaming around their neighborhood." A wild pack of dogs, we're thinking they're wild, there was three of them, attacked two people horseback riding. And lucky for them, as those horses are raring, out in District Four, out in their, in Faulkland area, somebody happened to be driving by with his truck. He was blowing his horn. He was trying to use his truck to get the dogs off of him. And keep in mind, you've got horses raring up with your citizens on it. He went back to get his gun, and he came back, and this is a long-term hunter who knows how to shoot a gun, and said, "I didn't know where to shoot. I didn't know whether to shoot up, shoot down, shoot at them. I might hit the horse." One man, and this is amazing, the number of times we've heard this, having to shoot a gun up in the air just so the dog will go away so they can get in their car to go to work. Especially that happens in the morning, the night shift people or the people who go out real early. Whole neighborhood of children are unable to go outside, and I mean a whole neighborhood. One day, we went out there where little Tyrus was. There was no kids outside, and we knocked in about 20 homes, and everyone said, "Nobody will help us. We have to be bit first." And nothing made me angry than watching Tyrus throw football with Billy, and every third throw, he was doing his head. And I thought, "What are you doing?" And he said, "I'm looking for the dog." Think if that was your kid. Now, it's not only people that are suffering from dogs. Well, these are some extra dogs, because I saw where someone said, "I hope she's got pictures of dogs." Well, I got pictures of dogs. We had dogs that we stopped. Luckily, this guy didn't bite us. He ended up pretty friendly. But we had one dog that jumped on our car when we tried to take a picture, and I about lost a hand. But it was my fault. I shouldn't have taken, camera shy, I guess. Again, dogs going in trash cans. Two of the dogs, kind of hard to see, they were running their happiest dogs until they ran on Highway 264, and two cars had to slam on brakes and skidded. This dog here on the right, he's the only one out of all these dogs that had a collar. More dogs. Imagine if you're going out to your mailbox, like Ms. Annie said, and you had that dog sitting right there. People with underpinnants, some of these dogs are just looking for shelter. You know, you have to think, it's not all about the dogs. These dogs have put in extreme circumstances, and they're going to act in different ways that they would not have done if their owner had taken care of them. Those two dogs there are pitiful. It was sleeting, and I come from a dog hunting family. We had kennels on our property. And we never had, when a dog, when it was cold and raining, they got underneath a bush, underneath the car, they were in their doghouse. These two dogs could hardly lift their head up. Either they were weak or cold. It was pitiful. But it was a Saturday, and I didn't call animal control, because I didn't think they would come. Here's a roaming dog that I called on. Pretty dog, smiling. The other dog at a mailbox. This is the one that I was told, "Why don't you contain these dogs? Bring them back. We'll come pick them up." A week later, they're on my neighbor's porch, wasn't leaving. We have a cat head that's left, that's it of that cat, and the dog's just smiling. Roaming dogs can get lost. Some are being used. These are not Pitt County dogs. These are stock photo. Dog baiting. These dogs are hungry. They don't have food. They don't have shelter. They don't have vaccinations. Now, we did see dogs that had wounds on them, and they were infected out in the woods. There being unwanted dog breeding. You got dogs who are being hit by a car. I don't know if I had a picture of a big black dog. He's dead, two days later on the side of the road. People are shooting dogs. They have no other choice. People are poisoning dogs because they're having, they know it's wrong, but they said, "We have no other choice, and we've got to protect our family." These dogs have mange and worms and infections, and the risk of rabies exposure. Now, one potential outcome of a roaming dog is a dog bite. 50% of dog bites occur when a dog is running at large, if there's dog-on-dog aggression, or if they're protecting the property on their own property. But dogs that are roaming, they start to perceive the area that they roam as their property as well. In 2012, North Carolina and California led the nation, number one, North Carolina, in dog bite-related fatalities. Now, all the data that I'm using is not, is Pitt County data. I want you to keep that in mind. It's not national statistics. It's right here in Pitt County. We evaluated bites beginning in 2008, as that was the last time that the Animal Control Board came before you asking for a comprehensive leash law to be presented, or not leash law, but a control ordinance. Data had to be hand-tabulated, because again, all of these sheets were on paper. They were not computerized, and they were stored in plastic totes in an outbuilding behind the animal shelter. During this time period, about five and a half years, there were 1,314 total reported dog bites. Now, these are bites that were reported to animal control, be it through medical professionals, by victims themselves, or from law enforcement agencies. I've lost the sod. Out of those bites that occurred, 353 of them were children in Pitt County, and we counted a youth of 17 and under. Now, what I did with these bites was, my goal was to find out, we know we've got roaming dogs. Now we know we've got dog bites. Now I was trying to find out where were the dog bites occurring. So we went to the intake sheets, and over this period of time, the sheets had changed. And sometimes, all the information was not provided to animal control. And what I tried to map out first was where the bite occurred. If that location was not known, then we used where the dog owner lived. We thought maybe it would have occurred by their house. And lastly, if that wasn't available, we used the victim's address, because that was always on the referral form. Now, when I first printed this out, you know, it looks heavy in Greenville. I was talking, actually, Commissioner Garrus was the first one to look at it. And he said, "Now, look, you've got a lot of bites around here in Greenville, and they've got a leash law." So then I took my homework assignment from you, and I thought, "Well, I knew," because I had literally been in bed reading these things for a month, "that a lot of those citizens were being bit in the county, but we just didn't have the address." So what I did next was I contacted all the municipalities and spoke with their police departments. And I asked for a record of their bites. Now, all of these municipalities have a, some type of control ordinance. One that's not listed is Simpson. They did not get back with their bite data to me. So their population of 400 and whatever bites they would have had was put in with the county. And Faulkland and Grimesland, they mirror the county. So as you can see, we went from 2008, and we updated the bites through October 13. Animal control on file had 1,418 bites. The county had 1,045. And looking at Greenville, they have 20,000 more people than us. They had 321. So by looking at this, even though it took a lot of work, you can see that counties or municipalities that have some type of ordinance, the bites are less. Now, I also know that this is just taking the information that's provided. Sometimes agencies do not provide the information, so this could be skewed a little bit more. But overwhelmingly, you can see that the county has more bites than municipalities. Then we looked at it from 2012, from January, October 2013. Pitt County residents had a five to seven times greater chance of receiving a bite than others, than the citizens of Greenville during that time period. So the next question was from Mr. Eugene James, said, "Now, you know Dern Tooten is the family dog that's biting these kids." So I went back and asked Michelle for that tote again. Now, keep in mind, statistically speaking, that is correct. Most bites happen by the family dog. But we're talking about the bites that were reported. If your dog nipped you or bit you, you're most likely not going to report your dog to animal control. The only way that's going to happen is if you had to seek medical attention, and then they, by law, is supposed to report it to animal control for the rabies studies that they do. So what we did is we took the dog owner's address, and if it matched the victim's address, we classified it as a dog owner bite. And out of those 1,314 bites, only 229 of them was classified as the dog owner. Then the next question I had, "How do you know these people are really being bit?" So then I went and met with Dr. Toshlog, because I knew people were getting injuries. But as Commissioner Hammond said, "Go to the headwaters if you want your information." So we went to the top. Yes, people are being bit in Pitt County. You get open wounds of your arms, your legs, your head, neck, face, and trunk. And these are dirty bites a lot of times. They get infected. People get a lot of arm injuries, because think about it, if you're walking your dog and a dog runs out, what are you going to do but try to help your dog, try to grab your child? And that's a lot of times where adults will get facial injuries. As Dr. Toshlog said, "Children are at a distinct disadvantage due to the relationship of their face to a dog's mouth." The question, "Are you sure, Beth, that people are really getting bit?" At Vitat Medical, from August 1, 12, to August 31, 13, there was 247 admissions through the ED for dog bites. So I would say that yes, people are getting bit. Four times as many dog bite-related emergency room visits, and three times as many hospitalization stays are in rural areas as compared to the urban areas. Getting bit by a dog is not cheap. In 2012, the average cost of a dog bite-related insurance claim in North Carolina was about $30,000. On your, whoops, I didn't flip it. These, I've lost my little thing over here. Not only are people bit, but animals are injured as well. Cats, dogs, people's livestock are being killed. And the sad thing, one farmer said, he says, "Nothing worse than a dog's come out, because these dogs, again, are just hungry. They want to eat." He says, "Nothing worse to go out and hear your animals screaming, and then you have to take a gun and shoot your livestock." The dog on the screen, cute dog, looks like a little black lab. You want to pick him up and bring him home. That dog doesn't have a collar. Nobody knew who owned it in that neighborhood. And the dog would growl, probably out of just fear. Now, if that dog bit you, you have 24 hours to decide, from my understanding, whether you're going to go through the rabies vaccination series. If you don't know who the dog owner is, you can't ask him if he's vaccinated, if it doesn't have a collar, or if the dog has not kept up with his vaccination. That first shot has to be given at Vitat Medical, from data that I got from the health department here. I was unable to get that amount, but another hospital I spoke with, that shot alone at that facility was $8,900, and that was not the cost of the doctor in the hospital stay. The second, third, and fourth shot at the health department here in Greenville is $296 a pop. Now imagine if your child gets bit, and you've got these type of bills. That's just the rabies vaccinations. That's not the medical care. Or if people in this county are underinsured or have no insurance, who's going to pay for it? Besides the human bills, you also have the veterinarian bills. And then you've got the missed work and missed school as people recover and do their follow-up care. So we have roaming dogs. We have bites. We have a nuisance complaint ordinance, for some reason, is not serving the needs of the citizen by these numbers and by the people that you heard here tonight. So what I did was I thought, "Well, there has to be something new to do." Let's see, we didn't call it a leash law, because there's a certain connotation. Some people, when they hear leash law, they think they have to keep their dog on a leash 24 hours a day. And some leash laws are set up. If you walk out of your house, your dog has to be on a leash. That's not what we've done. What we did is we went and spoke with hunters. We talked with citizens. I spoke with over 25 dog hunting counties to ask, "How are you doing it?" Because counties east of here have ordinances. Counties west of here have it. Somehow, other counties are managing to do this. Now, the dog at the top, you see the hunting dog, he's in compliance under the canine control ordinance. We've gone black. It's alive. It was fall. It was deer hunting time, and we are not. It needs to go up. This is the ordinance. You need to go up. Right there. This dog would be in compliance. Also, I was a little concerned that it might be lost, because his buddies wasn't with him hunting, but he had a GPS collar. The other dog at the top, she is pretty well voice command. She doesn't have to be on a leash. She doesn't have to be in a kennel. She's really good. She's allowed on my property, because I told my neighbor, "Your dog can come on there." She's in compliance, the dog. Now, my dog, the goofy golden, he doesn't read property lines very well, and he can't read a sign, but he can read a fence. And they also hold in my chickens, and I think my neighbors are probably very happy that I have those pets contained. So what's the canine control ordinance propose? First of all, again, these are counties, this isn't an all-inclusive list. This is just the ones that I spoke with. And this took about three days of conversations. Edgecombe, Halifax, Craven, and Catawba, they don't have a control ordinance per se. They do it through their nuisance ordinance. So somehow, they have their nuisance ordinance strong enough that when a dog's off the property and someone calls, that when they call, that dog can be picked up, and that person could be given a verbal warning, then a written warning, and then start being fined. But here's what we're proposing for Pitt County. Dogs shall run free on the dog owner's property, whether you own it, lease it, or rent it. Again, we're not telling you how you have to have your dog on your property, be it a pen, be it voice command. Dogs can run free on any property in which the property owner has given them permission. So again, the person who has to call the complaint, the dog has to be on their property for the dog to be picked up. Dogs, your friends, your neighbors let you have it, you're not going to be out of compliance. I have a farmer with a bunch of property behind my house. He's given me permission to run my dog on his property. You would not be out of compliance. A dog owner will not be negligent or penalized under this ordinance if the dog just accidentally escapes from an enclosure, be it your house, or jumped out of the car and ran to your neighbor's house, or if a dog broke free from its leash while you were walking it. Now, you are responsible if your dog goes and bites somebody, but that's something different. This will ultimately be up to the animal control's discretion, whether this is just an accident that occurred, if perchance someone happens to, I don't want to say be jerk enough, but, you know, concerned and say, "Hey, her dog just got out." But they've never had a call on this individual before. Or whether you're a habitual offender who's truly not managing your dog. That would be up to the animal control officer. Now, when that dog is off the owner's property, or off the property of the dog owner that has given, been given permission, the dog needs to be under some type of physical control of its owner or a competent person. This was put in because some counties had problems where children would walk a Rottweiler or a Great Dane, and obviously, they can't control that dog if they're out in public. What is physical control? It could be a suitable leash, cord, or It could be a suitable leash, cord, or chain, any other contraption at PetSmart or Walmart where it's on, attached to the dog and attached to your hand. It was Wake County that said, "Make sure you say it's in the hand," because people would have a leash and their dogs were walking and they were behind it. Make sure your dog will be under physical control if it's inside your vehicle. It doesn't have to be restrained by a leash in your vehicle. It can be in a dog box, it can ride in the back of someone's truck, whether it's being driven or whether it's being parked. You can carry your dog. A lot of people have small dogs and they carry them, or as long as it's some, some type of secure enclosure, especially with small dogs, they have all these carriers and purses, purses and strollers. We tried to include that as well. Now, the exclusion for hunting dogs. If a dog is engaged in active hunting, if it's in field training, enclosed or open season, and that hunter is in compliance with North Carolina and Pitt County hunting laws and ordinances, they are excluded from this hunting, excuse me, excluded from this ordinance. Now, I wanted to go through, and this was at the suggestion of a lot of the hunters. They said, "We'll stand, we won't come out against you on this, but there are certain things we want to make sure that this doesn't get misinterpreted, or people try to use this for something else than what you're trying to accomplish." Because, again, I came from hunters, and when everybody told me, "You better watch out for those hunters," I thought, "Y'all must have a bunch of mean hunters in Pitt County, because we didn't have them in Pasquotank growing up." Because I'm like, "What hunter wants to see a child get bit? Nobody does." So the canine ordinance does not require leashes on hunting dogs during active hunt or field training. It does not define how a hunter controls their dog during a hunt or field training. They have lots of different mechanisms, horns, leashes, voice control, GPS tracking collars. A citizen cannot use this ordinance to stop dog hunting in this county. A citizen cannot use this ordinance to stop dog training during closed or open season. And a citizen cannot use this to address any issues they have with a hunter and dogs on their property during hunting season. That's done with the Pitt County Sheriff Office trespassing and with the North Carolina Wildlife Land Protection Owner. That is not what this is geared to do. This ordinance has nothing to do with dog breeding regulations. It has nothing to do with your pet or hunting dog limits on your property. It does not enter into the tethering or anti-tethering issue, and this is not a breed-specific regulation. Further, dogs are excluded, of course, your law enforcement canines. I almost forgot that when a deputy said, "You forgot about my dog back here." And if your dog is actively participating in a tracking test or obedience schools, you're excluded while they're participating in that activity. So what happens if you're out of compliance and an animal control officer knocks on your door? You get a verbal warning. And again, I want to make this clear, that this was just a proposed ordinance, this is not done by county staff. This was a homework assignment given to me by Commissioner James, said, "Put it down on paper and tell me what it might look like." And again, this came from other counties, is where I pulled this information from. Verbal warning, written warning, civil citations. And the people I spoke with said, "Start them big," because it should be the person who's not managing their dog that pays for that officer coming out and not the other citizens. $100, $200, $300. And after that, removal of the dog from the home. The dog owner would have to comply with animal control recommendations on how to secure that dog. Again, always looking for the least restrictive method. The dog owner, of course, will have to pay for any fees while that dog is kennelled at the shelter. And then, once animal control approves of those environmental changes, the dog owner can reclaim the dog after all those fines are paid. And this is already happening in the municipalities. Now, when a dog is picked up, the ultimate goal, of course, is to get that dog back to its owner. People have to have collars on their dog or have them microchipped. The centralized website that they're talking about would be a phenomenal piece of legis, I don't know if it's legislation, whatever you have to do to make that happen. So many dogs that we saw, however, fell in that latter category. One day, we drove and we saw 25 dogs, starting out 33, heading up Seven Pines, going up to Aiden Griffin, all in the country roads. Animal Control does an excellent job trying to attempt to locate owners. That's the first thing we want to do. But if not, then the dog has to go to the shelter. And then, if we can't find the owner, then you try to adopt the dog. And the last thing that anything, anybody wants to happen is for a dog to be euthanized. So the next thing that I looked at was, was just a bug in my ear, was if you only knew how our budget and our staffing had been cut. And so I looked at what happened in Pitt County, but I said, "Well, I don't know if that's a good number or a bad number." So what I did was, again, I got back on the phone and I started calling counties. I looked at the population, I tried to keep it just apples to apples, I took the population and I took the budget. And out of those counties, Pitt County has $2.57 allocated dollar per person in animal services. Kurthuck County is high, because they're in the midst of building a shelter. Hartford, Nash, Craven, Edgecombe, Pitt County is at the bottom. Then we looked at the counties, which we compare ourselves based on population and tax base. Pitt County is at the bottom. Then, in all of this, again, what your staff told me that day in that conversation that we had in September, all of this validated everything that they said. The budget and staffing was noticeably reduced in the year 2010, while Pitt County's human population and dog population continued to increase. And there's the staffing. It's hard for staff to meet the needs of citizens when it's been cut. I don't know how they would do it. And I wanted, I was going to look at, Pitt County's a big county compared to these other counties, our square miles, but that was just too much math. But when you look at the area that they have to cover with the amount of staff that they The next thing I asked was, "What's your animal control staff numbers look like?" And keep in fact, this is not shelter, this is only officers who are out in the field. And Pitt County, we have one staff person for 43,000 people. Wilson, our neighbor, they have half our people, and they've got eight field officers. Then again, I looked at our counties of what we compare ourselves to by population. Pitt County rose above Johnston County. But again, those four officers in Pitt County are not in the field full-time. Half their time, they're in the shelter doing shelter duties. Office staff, Pitt County, none. With 172,000 people with the number of calls that I just showed you coming in, and that's only the dog calls, that's not all of the calls that come in. They need someone who can help answer the telephones, do some of this data collection that took us months to do. And the last thing I want to talk about again is looking at the animal control officers. 50% of their time is for the field. The other 50% of the time is their paperwork or their shelter, cleaning the shelter. When I was listening to Michelle discuss about, a lot of times, you know, they're there until 10:30, sometimes later, depending on what the shelter looks like, cleaning it up, it dawned on me, because I kept wondering, the people who said they would try to call, a lot of times when they're trying to go to work, or these kids are trying to get on the school bus, and nobody answered the phone. Well, if you're cleaning the shelter, how can you answer the telephone? And there was one gentleman who said, "I called, and someone did answer the phone finally, and said, 'I don't have an officer to send out right now.'" Now, I just want you to know what that sounds like. If you've got two parents out with sticks, trying to protect kids on a bus stop, and at the time, they don't have an animal control officer who can come out, because this county, what it's saying, it is more important for an animal control officer to scoop up dog excrement in a kennel than to get out and go help somebody with kids at that bus stop. Now, Pitt County has a roaming dog issue, and it has real-life implications for the citizens of this county. If you have not experienced it, count yourself blessed. Because there was one gentleman, he said, "I always heard people talk about it, I didn't believe it." He said, "You better believe it, when it happened to me, and I watched my cat get killed, and I had to jump on top of my car to get away from the dog." Something needs to be done, and he's out there in Stokes. Another gentleman at Stokes, avid hunter, coming out of the woods, got chased by a pack of dogs. He was on a four-wheeler. He dropped one dog, but he said, "I couldn't get the other ones, they were going to overtake me." So he drove, went to get some help. Within 30 minutes, he came back. Those dogs were gone, but the dog that he had shot had been eaten to nothing that was left in its hide in a 30-minute period from those dogs. Now, imagine if those dogs had overtook that hunter. And he said, "Imagine," I'm sitting here thinking, "Where did those dogs go? It was in the community of Stokes off Highway 30." So yes, there is a problem, but I ask each of you to take a stand finally. Yes, there's a problem, or no, there's not. If you say yes, that there is a problem, don't bring it to the budget table and then let it die, because you might as well say, "No, I don't consider this a priority in this county." I ask you to draft and to pass an ordinance, because citizens' lives are being affected every day. Every day, someone is not able to go out on their property or walk around in their neighborhood. There was almost a bite every other day going into Vitat Medical Center over a 13-month period. You can search for a way to fund an ordinance, and then I discovered last week that you can search for ways not to pass an ordinance. I want to address several reasons by staff that was given of why now, which I don't understand, why this ordinance should possibly postpone, when they themselves have brought it to you on multiple occasions. Please don't determine if an ordinance is needed or passed, whether a group of volunteers who are appointed to a board can find you funding. That's not fun, fair to that group. That's a monumental task. Researching this information I presented tonight was arduous, it was exhausting, and it was stressful. And a lot of these people on these boards have 40-hour jobs. So if you, as a board, believe that an ordinance is needed to protect and to serve the citizens, then I ask you, please, direct this to your taxpayer-funded county staff members. They have the resources. It was hard work, calling all these animal control places and say, "Who are you with? Who's your boss?" And I had to say, "I'm just a citizen." The next question is, "People won't like a pet tax. They're not going to like a registration fee or a property tax." Many people that I talked to, rich, poor, and everywhere in between, said, "I don't mind paying a small fee, kind of like we do for the landfill, if I know that money is going to animal control, so when I call, someone comes out and picks up that dog." Folks don't like having a dog running out and snapping at it when it's trying to go to a mailbox. This just happened about two or three weeks ago. A mother heard her kids getting off the bus. She heard them scream, and she thought they were happy. Then she looked out, and she saw two big black dogs chasing them down a long driveway. She grabbed a baseball bat and she ran out stomping, trying to protect her children. Then she heard her daughter scream. She looks back, and that child had fallen down and hurt itself trying to run into the house. How would you feel if you went out to get something out of your car? At 9:00 at night, you forgot your wallet, and you get there, you go get it, you shut the door, and then you've got a dog growling at you. And this was an off-duty deputy. He knows how to use a gun, he knows how to use pepper spray, but he said, "Who the heck has that when you just want to run out to get something out of your car at nighttime?" Folks don't like to pay property taxes, but they don't like to pay it when they can't even use their own property without having a dog on it. Now, I also want to talk about a control ordinance where you don't want to mention it, because you're scared that, gosh, if we talk about a control ordinance, a lot of people are going to come out against it, and we're not going to be able to increase our staff and funding. I don't see how those are connected. If people were going to come out about the connect, the control ordinance, so be it. But I don't think them coming out about that, by discussing it on this board and with citizens, interferes with staff increases. That's two separate matters. Now, if the animal shelter is reporting the lowest intake numbers ever, if their live-release rates have increased, and if there are only four nuisance complaints in a whole year, I ask, as a citizen, and keep in mind, I know they need help, why do you want to give $180,000, fund three and a half more positions, and not give a different, new service where people have been calling you for help, so that when a citizen calls, they're going to get the same answer they did before you got the increase for that staff? If they're still going to answer the phone the same way when a citizen calls with this extra funding and staff, to be told, "We don't have the legal authority to come out and help you." That's what this whole project was for, was to give authority for animal control, just to go out and help a citizen. Another concern I have was the discussion of, "We really don't want this passed right now because of space limitations." There has been space limitations before you even got this shelter, and you've had space limitations since you've had it. It's been 12 years. Staff states in the paper today that they're worried about the influx of dogs. It's going to be increased caseload, they won't be able to handle it. Do you know what that tells a citizen who's been chased, or after you've spoke to over 500 people? If they're worried about the influx of dogs, they know because it's a big problem. And if they don't, can't manage the dogs, who's going to manage those dogs? Who's going to suffer the consequences of those dogs not being managed with the citizens who are living out in the communities? One other comment that was made several times by different people, that often, that backside of that shelter is not being used because of noise complaints from the backside of Windsor subdivision. I don't blame them. I wouldn't want to hear a bunch of barking dogs either. So now, you've got a dog shelter that's breaking a nuisance ordinance for citizens. Now imagine, if you go and you have a dog that you have finally caught, and you call animal control and they tell you, or if the city in Greenville comes to bring a dog, and they say, "Sorry, we don't have any space." And if that backside is shut, my question is, why? Why is that backside shut? It shouldn't be caused, be because of nuisance complaints. You have to make a choice. Are you going to protect the citizens? Are you more concerned about people who are complaining about dogs? And keep in mind, I agree, I think the shelter should be moved, but it was poor planning on someone's part. Should not compromise citizen safety. Now, if you cannot expand or build a new shelter at this point, then I ask you, you're going to have to make a decision. Who is animal control going to serve if you indeed believe that citizens are being threatened by dogs? Maybe you need to reallocate the space that's there, refocus the priority of the shelter temporarily, until these bite nuisance, bite, the bite numbers come down, the nuisance calls go down. One county made this change, and it was Edgecombe County, and they did it under their nuisance ordinance. And he stated, "The first six months was crazy." He said, "But after a few hundred-dollar fines and people's tongues got wagged, they knew the county was serious, and it was amazing how those dogs started being controlled by their owners." Everyone wants the animal shelter to have intake numbers that are low, that their euthanization rates are low, and for their live-release rates to be high. But again, I ask you, if you feel that there is an issue, which I do in this county, don't compromise public safety, because you're worried that those numbers are temporarily going to be affected. What about saying yes to an ordinance instead of finding ways to say no? How about maybe you need to say, "We need to pass this ordinance to decrease these bites, to decrease the nuisance calls coming in, to get kids back outside playing in their neighborhoods, people walking and riding their bikes. Stop having staff running all around chasing the same dogs." The next question that I heard, that raised a question at the budget meeting, was, "We want to make sure we have time to study this. We don't want to raise false expectations." Well, I don't know about false expectations, but everybody I met had some pretty simple ones. They're basic. They believe in the rights of a property owner, be able to get in and out of their house, go sit on their porch and deck, whether they're in a wheelchair or not, go to their mailbox, play outside, work in the yard, take a walk around the road. They expect just to be able to do that. It's not much that they're asking for. Now, as far as the time, it has been 12 years since this county has taken over that shelter. I ask, "How much more time do you need?" Counties all over this state has found a way of doing it. Some areas of this county is suffering because of these dogs. They need help. It's not right to do something. It's time to make a change. Michaela was a five-year-old little girl who lived in Waxall, Union County. She was killed by two dogs. Her grandmother, trying to save her life, suffered serious injuries trying to save her granddaughter. Neighbors had called about these dogs. They hadn't done anything yet, but they were concerned about them. Citizens aren't stupid when they're calling you and they don't feel right about a situation. They called to say, "These dogs look malnourished and abused. They're roaming the neighborhoods, were concerned about the kids." Animal Control at Union County told them, "Dogs are allowed to roam. There's no leash law." And they had no jurisdiction of Waxall, which is like a little township about the size of Winterville. Waxall had a leash law, but their animal control officer position had been eliminated. There was no one to answer their call. There was no one to answer their call. Now imagine you were the one that took the phone call that day at Union County Animal Control about those dogs, and you said, dogs are allowed to roam, there's no leash law in this county. Now imagine, the next day, sitting at the kitchen table, you're getting ready to drink your cup of coffee, and you look at the front page of the newspaper, and you see a little girl had been killed by those dogs the day before that you said were allowed to roam. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I believe Dr. Johnson's been trying to get my attention for some time now, so we'll let him go first, and then we'll go down the line, whatever the commissioner's desire.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This county has an excellent county manager. I do not believe that many of the issues that have just been mentioned have been directly brought to the attention of the county manager. That is the first stop, the county manager of Pitt County. If we are to get any changes made, whatever they are, that's where it begins, with the Mr. Elliott is an outstanding county manager. He will listen to your concerns and interests, and he will make proposals to this board that will help to eliminate any problems. With the exception of one or two members on this board, I am one of the oldest. The map that was just shown to you, I'm very familiar. I live inside the city of Greenville. Many of those incidents were inside the city of Greenville, as you showed on your map. We need to separate problems that are generated within the city of Greenville from those issues outside the city of Greenville. District 3, which represents the area that I'm legally responsible for, begins at Elm Street and goes east. It would be helpful when information is passed on to the county manager, that your map show those areas within the city of Greenville, separate from those areas outside the city Since I was able to walk and run, I have been responsible for dogs all my life. The number-one issue with a dog is proper care and attention. If dogs are properly fed and watered, for the most part, they don't cause problems. The Assistant Attorney for Pitt County is seated over here, and I frequently go by her office, and I ask her about vaccination. We do have a law requiring rabies vaccination, dogs, and I believe it is followed. That's just one step. There are other issues that need to be presented to the county manager, and I believe when they are presented to the county manager, he in turn will present some proposals to the Board of Commissioners, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Of course, Dr. Johnson, your point's well-taken, but it's not best responsibility to tell us where the bites were in the city or in Greenville. You've had your time. But it's a severe enough problem. It's not an issue where it was, but the problem is magnificently beyond approach, if that's the proper term. And I'm just devastated, as an individual, that we have let it continue, and I was part of it. But you presented the facts to us, the evidence to us. Now, we need to weigh it from that and do something about it. Mr. James, you want to speak?
Yes, I've already met with the manager. He wanted to know what was our number-one priority. Was this very important? And I told him outright, this, to me, is the number-one issue that we should have been on to, Mr. Chairman, years ago. Now, let me say this to all of you, but I want the county, the citizens of Pitt County to know this. You had $172,000 for Pitt County. You're right, but you're counting Greenville has employees for dog control. You're not counting those for the number of workers that we have. So I want you to know, and I want the citizens of Pitt County to know, that there are many more employees working for dog, or there's a dog control than three and a half employees. That's the first thing. But I want you all to know this. What we're talking about here today is controlling dogs. I know how to control them. Believe me, I do. I've got a bunch of cows. I've got a pastor. And if there's any dogs calling that pastor, he's my dog, and I'm going to kill him. The good Lord will be with me. You might not like it, but I want you to know I'm going to kill him. People know me know that. And the wildlife people, which I tried to bring out, I have that right to do that, they are destroying my property. So I'm saying this to you, we've got some weak people in Pitt County. That dog, I don't care who he is, if he's out there biting me or my grandkids, he's a dead dog. And that's the way we're going to solve our problem. We must be able to control dog population. Whether you like it or not, to me, that dog doesn't have a soul. He's not like you and me, in the eyes of God. And if nobody's there to care for him, I think the best thing we can do is to get him out of his misery. I know you don't like what I'm saying, a lot of you, but I'm telling you the truth. And there are thousands of dogs in Pitt County. They are just out there. They haven't been vaccinated. These dogs, Dr. Johnson, haven't been vaccinated. When I was a little boy, we had the veterinarians to come all over Pitt County. They came to every community, they gave dogs rabies shots. So, dog, you remember that? They didn't have the money, so they did it free. The county paid for it. But I want to say this to you, I'm for doing something, and I'm not for postponing it. You've done your work, it's up to this board now to take and do ours. And we are not a poor county. Believe me, we are not. And I mean that. Like I told the manager, we can find the money. We got it. We can do other things, can't be missed, guys. And we can do this. But I'm telling you now, you can't let dogs control your life. Now, I'm telling you from experience, I had a granddaughter that got bit, but it was a favorite dog. But I want to kill that dog, and would have, but it wasn't mine. It belonged to them. They didn't do anything. I didn't do anything. It wasn't reported. Many of the dog bites are not reported, you know that. You don't want to hurt the feelings of anybody, but it's time. We're not leaving now. You know, I'm getting pretty old, and we're not leaving now the way we were when I was a little boy. It's completely different. We've got a big number of population people. We've got a lot of people in Pitt County. We've got a lot of dogs. And if these people can't control their dogs, I am one county commissioner, it's better to make the rules that we will control them, and I will give that sheriff the authority to get rid of them one way or another. I don't care who don't like it. It's our duty to protect the citizens that we have here in Pitt County, just like you suggested. And I hope I haven't made anybody mad. If I did, forgive me, but I mean exactly what I said. Thank you. That's all I got to say, Mr. Chairman. But I'm ready to take and do something. And let me do this while I'm talking. I would really like to make this motion, and I'm not talking about making it and putting it on the right button, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that we direct our staff to analyze the canine control proposal and bring back an analysis to the board to be included as part of the budget workshop deliberation. And that's the informal motion, but what I would like, Mr. Manager, is that we go ahead and we start the procedure. I know we've got to have our attorney, I've talked to her too. She knows what we're up against. We want to have it right. We want it legal in every respect. We're realizing that it's going to cost us more money, because the sheriff's department is going to have to enforce this. I know what Edgecombe County is doing. They carried a guy that's got the dog over there, they put him in jail. Did you know that? I'm telling you. I live next to Edgecombe, and it's working. They're not having problems in Edgecombe anymore. Those people now, if the dog is out of line, you're bored, they are gone. They get away from that place, because they know, they know, you know, that the sheriff's going to be there, and they're going to get them. And when you know something, people in Pitt County are not crazy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, I'll second Mr. James' motion, and we can get on with...
All right, Mr. Coulson, and then Ms. Ward.
Mr. Chairman, as a member of the Animal Control Advisory Board, I'd like to actually speak as the last commissioner on this subject.
All right, Ms. Ward.
First, I'd like to say that I think all of the commissioners have met and spoken with Ms. Sanchez, and her husband was at the meeting that we had last week with the Animal Control Board. I don't think there was a single person that listened to your presentation that did not feel just like Commissioner Oyn said. And we were all talking about it and trying to figure out what it was that was best for us to do. When the Animal Control Board plan came through, and we approved that unanimously, I felt like we were, you know, on our way. With that said, and I do want you to know that there's not a commissioner on this board that was not influenced by your presentation, and that we do not, back when we saw it personally and tonight. And the citizens, we appreciate them coming forward and sharing their information. I agree with this motion, but I would like to offer a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman, and that is to do exactly what Mr. James said, but instead of directing our staff, and I don't know, I assume that the Animal Control Board members of it are part of our staff, and the animal shelter personnel is our staff, but because our staff, as I consider it, administrative staff here in this building, at this time are presently already started budget meetings with the different departments, I feel like the Animal Control Board and anyone else we'd like to assign, I know we have our Assistant Attorney, I think that's your, I'm not sure what your title is exactly, but she already serves on the board as a liaison, and we could appoint some other people to help or whatever, but I feel like that board could come back sooner with a proposal for us to consider than to wait until the budget workshop time. So that is my substitute motion, that we do proceed on with looking at a canine control ordinance. And the vicious dog ordinance did come about at the second time an ordinance was presented to us. And of course, it's not working like we had hoped it would be, of course, and part of that is implementation of it. So I didn't want it to think that we hadn't done anything, but we have been slack, I totally agree, and here we are out here, you know, and that is exposed, but that is my motion.
Is there a second to the substitute motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure I understand the motion. The motion is that we have our Animal Control Advisory Board involved in this process. They are the ones that we, as a board, have given the authority to manage our animals, and I think that it is very appropriate that they are involved, and that is your motion, right?
Yes.
Well, I will second that.
All right, Mr. James.
Can I just say one other?
Wait, wait, Mr. James, I believe Dave needed to speak, and then your next, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is it possible that the animal control or the facility could be relocated to the county complex that's across the river? Not as many residential areas and neighborhoods in close proximity to that complex as it is out at Bill Ford.
That's probably an overture, Mr. James, that you have something else to say.
Yes, I do. This is the thing, this is what's wrong with government. You keep making things bigger. We know what the problem is, dog bites. And let's face it, the manager knows what the problem is. We've talked. And you're going to make it so big that you change things. That's a good way to, how do you put it, kind of, you say you're going to speed it up, you're not speeding it up. We know what goes on, well, I do. We know the problem. We need to go ahead and solve the problem. It's just that simple.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I, I thought we were going to come around, but we've already hit him to it a few times.
Yeah, you never can, Jimmy.
May I speak?
Please.
The reason I seconded that motion is simply because I don't want us, as a board, to usurp the authority that we have already granted to our Animal Control Advisory Board. They met with us a couple of weeks ago to pursue an animal control ordinance is in their strategic plan, and what I want us, as a board, to do is to encourage them to go on and get to work on that process, so we can incorporate whatever we need to and can incorporate in our budget planning this year, this year. I believe that you and your group has done an outstanding job. I am totally impressed with all the work that you have put in this process. I appreciate everyone coming this evening and speaking, and I think that we're all convinced that we've got to do something. But I want to do it in an orderly fashion as soon as possible, and I want to engage those people that we have given the authority to pursue this. And then they can come back to us with a recommendation, and then we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions, because, Mr. James, it is going to involve money. And I would say one other thing, on the chart that you have in your presentation about the fines, and you said, start big. As far as I'm concerned, we can start even bigger than the numbers you have there, because I still believe in those who are creating the problem, paying to help solve the problem. What we have is a lack of individual responsibility. I love animals, I love dogs, had one, don't have one now, but had one as a kid, but you have to assume responsibility for your animals. And as a little bit of a personal example, I'm a jogger. I run in my backyard, and two times over the last two months, I've had to alter my plans because of aggressive dogs. And so I'm very familiar with the problem, and I think that we are committed to look at this situation and take action. But again, I want to do it in an orderly fashion.
That's the reason that motion was made, to be in an orderly fashion. If you read that motion, it'll tell you that, who's got to have the final say-so? The staff of Pitt County. They're the ones who are going to work up the proper thing. Read the motion again, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ward. Ms. Ward.
Our Animal Control Board, I don't know how many of you know who is on that board, but we have a very effective, I think, what we have not done, and this is me personally saying this as commissioners, I don't think we have given them the support that I am suggesting right now to get this ordinance brought back to us as quickly as possible. And I think they will do that. We received the ordinance last, was it Friday? In our packet this past Friday, for the first time, and this information that we saw tonight, even though we had heard from you. And I think this is an excellent start. But it is a start, and just like Mr. Gary said, there are parts of it that need to be looked at. Maybe the feet, the citations do need to go up. That's one of the things. But this is a great place. You've done your homework. You've done a good job. What's on here is not something that I don't think we can't live with in Pitt County. But ordinances don't just get done by a citizen, you know, and brought to us, and we say yes, and then, you know, because I think by law, that's not the way it works. And I didn't make the law. The state did, or the Congress did. I don't know who made the law. But I, I think you've got the support of this entire board to move forward on this. But we would like the people that we have serving on the Animal Control Board, we have legal advice there. They can call on any staff member we have to come with them, and we have said we want you to talk, to come back to us with any additional money or budget needs, you know, at budget time. And now we're saying, come back to us as soon as you can with an ordinance that we can consider. And it may be before budget time, the budget workshop. So I still stand behind my motion, and I'd like us to vote as soon as we can.
All right, let's see. Melvin, I believe you indicated you wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we, we've heard this evening from black, white, Hispanic, young, old, and even a school days child. There's a problem in this county, and it's, it's, it's a terrible problem. And I'm for, as one commissioner, as Mr. James said, is for immediate action. We should do something, you talked about 2005, that we had an animal nuisance ordinance adopted, and I, I don't know whether anything has been done about it. I want to hear, what in fact does that ordinance say? What, what does it, what, what does it say? Have we been doing anything to, to, to help this situation? That sounds like we have. So I, I think immediate action should, should take place, and I'm, I'm for one commissioner to say, I support Mr. James' motion in conjunction, that maybe the staff working with the Animal Control Advisory Board. But this should be done, and it should not be tabled, it should not be delayed, it should be, it should be done immediately. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this, I'm supportive of Ms. Ward's motion, and this is why, it's because we have a process. When we have a zoning issue, we don't just handle it here, it goes through the zoning board and then to us. And no matter what, we could, we can't handle it immediately because we don't have the money to handle it immediately. It has to be put on for the next budget cycle. So the board has time, and they have legal counsel. What we have, like Commissioner Ward said, is a good start. Currently, it's not enforceable as written. That's why we need it fine-tuned and to go through legal and to be tightened up so that it can be enforced. When it comes to our animal control staff, I just want to say they do a magnificent job, and any shortcomings they have are because of this board not giving the proper support financially and not because of the job that they do. And I think we all recognize that. I just don't think it's been said tonight. But, so we have to decide what we're going to do. So we have time, and that board should come to us with something that we can enforce, that can be used for the benefit and the safety of these citizens. But at the same time, it needs to include the proper financial support for that staff and, and for expansion of the shelter if needed, because we're going to have to expand it if that's going to happen. So we just have to take a common sense approach to it as fast as possible, but we can't move faster than the budget year. And the budget year is starting in another month, and that's just the way it's going to be. We don't have the money to do it today as much as we would like to do something today. We can't add the staff right now. We can't expand the shelter in this budget year. We cannot move faster than the calendar. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe Mr. Coulson wanted to be the last, and I think we've gone around...
Am I speaking to Beth's motion?
Anything you want to speak to, Tom, go ahead.
Or am I speaking to the entire problem? Glenn, I, I totally disagree with you. So we're going to put it off another year?
No, four months.
Well, essentially, is our budget workshops are going to be when?
May.
Yeah, they're at home.
They're, they're May for the July 1...
For two months.
Yeah, but we're actually going to be talking about it next month, are we not?
Yeah, correct. Budget processes...
But here, here's my point. If we don't come up with numbers and we don't have a plan or something, some objective, this is probably going to be dead on arrival. Now, here, here's the point. You know, this is not new to this board. She brought up, in 2002, I brought up the, the request about a leash law. During my first two terms here, no less than three times, and I think it was more than that, the minutes would bear it out, I brought things up that had to do with the leash law. But there was a lot of objection from, well, the hunters came out in one meeting, if you remember. Eight of us were at, we were active board members at the time. So there's three types of memory, good, bad, or convenient. I'm hoping you're going to have good memory here. The hunters came out and they protested because I used the word leash law. Well, that turns out, it raised a, a lot of negative connotations, and I didn't realize that at the time. And I was unable to muster support on this board for a host of reasons, one of which was that we had no statistics. I didn't have anything other than talking to people, and I assumed that all of us talked to people. I knew it was a, a problem. I used to ride a bicycle before I had my heart trouble, and I would average anywhere from 20 to 35 miles a day. Luckily, I could average 23 miles an hour, and when the dogs would come out after me, I could sprint up to about 35 for a short distance, up to about three quarters of mile. Well, I could outrun the dogs. I had been bitten on the leg, I've been nipped at, I've never had one run out and wreck me, mainly because I was out in front of it before it was able to, to get to me. I've been threatened with them, like a couple of you said. But I believe you've talked with only eight of us commissioners, is that correct? Or did you talk all night? So there, there was one that we, that was not, does not have the benefit of data. But when this packet came, I sat there and I read every bit of it, word for word, and then I went back through it again. After about four hours and stuff, is I came away from, this is very comprehensive. And Tom, if you've read this, and if you've listened to her presentation, and if you looked at the slides, she did separate the city out. In the county, you're five to seven times more likely to be bitten where there's no leash law or canine control. Is that not alarming? Five to seven times more likely. And I would hope, and I know Beth, you said you did not want to, you wanted to walk out of here and be, wash your hands of it. I would love to have you back as an advisor and, and be able to, to, to help us as we go through this. Now, when, when Animal Control, when they came up with their strategic plan, and we had batted this around, and I've been on that board for a long time, and I kept saying, funding, 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 because what do we have here? And Eugene, with all due respect, you're the one that complains about raising taxes, money, or whatever.
They'll keep on doing it.
Well, and, and there are times to do that, and there are times when public safety, isn't that our number two objective?
We can get the money, I told you.
Well, okay, now, now we're moving along here. You've heard him not once, but twice say that we're going to get the money.
We are.
So I don't want to wait another year. I really don't want to wait four more months.
That's right.
I think the ordinance needs to be written, but we have never given the Animal Control Advisory Board a real strong indication from us, don't come back to us with a strategic plan that lowballs the effort. Because I'm going to tell you, there is nothing in that strategic plan, phase one, that addresses canine control. Not one thing. And so we spent $188,000, we bring three and a half full-time equivalents onboard, and what do we get? I think you kind of summed it up, it'd be more of the same.
That's right.
If we're going to do an animal shelter, which we have been doing, we haven't been doing animal control from the control standpoint, we've been doing animal shelter. We focused on that. That's been our priority.
That's right.
And it's a noble priority. What we need to be focusing on is safety. We say it's our number two issue behind education, and so therefore, let's step up the board, let's do something. Let's, don't just give them some general thing. Tell them to move their second phase, and I believe the second phase of the Animal Control Strategic Plan was to bring in the ordinance. It was moved up from beyond that to, after Beth gave a presentation three months or so ago, to them, they changed it in, before the, the strategic plan had been completely written, and moved it up as a mid-range or mid-level type of, of priority. So it's going to cost us more than an additional $188,000 to do both. Are we prepared this year to bite the bullet and do both? And I say, we either do that or we rearrange our priorities. We, as a board, will have to direct the Animal Control Shelter people to change their priorities, and the adoption rate and things like that, they'll have to be sacrificed because we didn't fund it, it's not their fault, because we didn't fund it. They're going to have to sacrifice and euthanize more dogs so that an officer can respond. I would also hope that we'd be able to take and, and call upon the sheriff's department to maybe get certain officers that are trained, because I'm going to tell you, I'm hearing some stories where deputies are actually counseling people, and Beth has shared a couple of stories with me, and telling people, and with no malice, no, no intent to mislead, but telling them something wrong because they don't know. And I, I'm going to say that there's a general confusion as to what we should be doing as, as far as a county, and what, and what they can actively do. But when a mother is threatened, or childrens are threatened, and we don't respond, shame on us. Why didn't we know the data? Beth, she got three totes. I heard they were stood over six feet tall when you stacked them up, with unorganized, not statistically looked at data. We get a report, we file it, and we throw it maybe month by month, or year by year, or whatever, into these totes, and nobody analyzed it. That is not an indictment of our staff at the animal shelter, because we have not funded them properly. They're too busy trying to just catch their breath. They don't have the time to do this. And thank God, we had a citizen, two citizens, that have spent months, probably thousands of their own personal hours, doing the work that we should have been doing all along. And if I sound like I'm lecturing, you're damned right I'm lecturing, because we should have known this. So I don't want to put it off to, to the next budget year. And I know that if this doesn't have something with meat in it by the middle of next month, we're likely, as a board, to find an excuse to push it off another, another year. I've been around this board long enough to know how things work. And...
He is not done. Don't you think about time to vote?
I am, I'm not necessarily sure I'm finished yet, Mr. James. Now, you run on and on and on, and I might just want to run on a little bit more about this.
Well, go right ahead.
Because I have been passionate about this since I was elected in 2000, up through 2008, and I'm still passionate when I got re-elected in 2013 or '12. I'm still passionate about it. Now, I hope to God that we do something. The people out here came before us. How many of you, and this is a, this is something else. I was one of the instrumental people to have a night meeting, one of the two meetings being a night. How many of you could have come out if we'd had this in the day, in the morning, and you were at work? I'd like to have a show of hands. How many people would have not been able to have been here because it'd been a day meeting? But you could be here because it's a night meeting. Night, that, raise your hands high.
You lost on that, but Tom, go on something else, sir.
It's important that we have controversial and important meetings at night. And that's why I requested that this presentation that Beth had was done at, at a night meeting, to give her an opportunity to try to, to try to challenge the people to come before us and get in our face. I have watched the hunters, and I've seen other people come up here, and it didn't matter that 90% of the other county, of the county didn't agree with them, but because they packed the audience, we voted it down three times that I'm aware of. I guess I'm through ranting, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we, we have two motions. Want to take a bite, huh?
I'm, I'm ready to vote, but I can't...
Can I say one thing about my motion, please, Mr. Coleman?
I was going to let the clerk or the attorney or someone read both of the motions. It might be that they're both the same thing. I think everybody's consensus in conversation has been along the same point, but let's see what the two motions said.
The substitute motion is to share the canine proposal ordinance with the Animal Control Advisory Board, so that the Animal Control Advisory Board may analyze their proposal and bring back a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners during the budget workshops.
No, I said as soon as possible, if prior to that was possible.
Okay.
Because to me, what we're telling the Animal Control Board, and if I have to add this, is that we are moving this now to a priority, along with your plan. In other words, don't come to us with the budget yet, but come to us, this ordinance, look at it, and I'm looking that way because there are a lot of our Animal Control Board people back there, to use this and to come to us quickly with something that we can put our teeth in, we can discuss, we can talk about. And I know eventually that it will have to be connected to money. It always is, any ordinance that we pass, anything else that we do. But I think this, we need to show, as commissioners, that we support this for our county.
Let's, let's let, once Mr. James' motion, then we get back to it.
Motion to direct staff to analyze the canine proposal and bring back an analysis to the board to be included as part of the budget workshop discussion.
Yeah, I want you to make a compromise suggestion between you two.
I know you want, may I make one? You might, but I know the need to act.
All right. The consensus, well, you don't know what I'm going to say yet, Gene. We can have two or three motions along, but I think the consensus of this board is for a ordinance to be drafted by the legal staff that we can then in turn present to the budget time. That's the short and long of it.
Right, but that's going to be on it two or three months.
But legal staff to, to draft an ordinance, control ordinance, using all the information we got, and then we can go from there with funding it. Isn't that what, isn't that what you were talking about, Tom, or Beth? Jimmy?
No, why, why don't we let the motion be for staff and Animal Control Advisory Board to work on this and come down? And that, because that's the situation.
The Animal Control Advisory Board is not, I'm going to say, trained to write ordinances. And it needs to come from staff. It needs to come from the legal department. I know that Lisa's on our board, and she could be that liaison between the two, and I'm sure that the Animal Control Advisory Board would love to have input.
All right, if, if there's no consensus, we'll vote on the substitute motion first.
You're voting on Beth's motion first.
You got your count?
A thousand.
All right, now.
Vote on the next motion.
Mr. Webb? Mr. Webb?
We'll make a substitute motion that we have the legal staff draft the ordinance that's enforceable.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
That's not, that's not allowed.
That's not allowed.
Can you make a...
Over here.
That's right. So, when the substitute motion failed, then the original motion is on the floor for us to vote on.
All right, all right. We'll go back to that then. Let's vote on the original one.
Can we clarify which staff is gonna be drafting this motion?
No, you have no say so.
We're asking you what's...
I'm asking you.
Ask the attorney. I talked, I'd have been a procedure. I know what it is.
All right, let's vote on the original motion by Mr. James.
Can we, we can't find out what staff he's talking about?
Well, it would be the county attorney, Assistant County Attorney, myself.
Staff can choose to talk to the Animal Control Advisory Board.
And just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, for clarification, this is not changing the motion that's on the floor. The original motion is on the floor for staff to draft the ordinance, and I believe the inquiry is, which staff are you, to which staff are you referring?
Yes, ma'am.
We got one staff, and that's pit counter staff, the manager.
Okay.
All right, read, read his...
They're the bosses.
Read his motion again.
Motion to direct staff to analyze the K-9 control proposal and bring back an analysis to the Board to be included as part of the budget workshop discussion.
All right, okay, you ready to vote?
Now, we're ready. It didn't even come close. David didn't intend to vote on us. So, you were way off here.
May I ask one question, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr.?
Does that also include the personnel that will be required to enforce this ordinance?
Yes, sir, it's a package.
Okay, fine, very good.
Recommend, okay. So, some people from there, what we call them?
We're ready to vote now, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we voted now.
Oh.
We're waiting on you, Eugene.
Now, we can vote, but that's when we vote yes.
We're waiting on you, Eugene.
That's what we, what's reported.
What's the next order of business?
Next order of business, are your regular items for decision? Regular items for decision. Mr. Chairman, if I could maybe suggest a, just a quick five-minute recess, maybe clear the room out, and then transition to the regular agenda.
Did you want to vote yet?
We're being these farmers.
He can vote, he can ask that if he...
We're back in session. Has everybody read those resolutions and utility easements about the Greenville, Pitt Greenville?
Yes, sir, make a motion, we approve.
I second it.
All right, let's vote. All right, Scott, you're next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a request tonight from Pitt Community College. As you're aware, as we've introduced to you in a prior meeting, their desire to have an advance in funds, project funds, for their $19.9 million bond referendum that's passed this fall. They're requesting $3 million. And they, this is outlined on page 78 in your package. Dr. Massey is here, if you have any questions from him. But basically, the essence of it, the request is to have $1.1 million in advance funds for the architectural services for the new $18 million science building. They're requesting $1.9 million for the acquisition of the building that will hold their BLET, their basic law enforcement training facility, as well as then the cost to retrofit that building. So, there'd be a $3 million advance. This $3 million would come from the county's quarticent sales tax. Once we go to the market and borrow the $19.9 million total, this $3 million out of the quarticent sales tax would then be reimbursed.
Beth?
Mr. Chairman, we've all had a chance to read this, and it's a matter of money going out and then us getting it back. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this.
I got one question. Dr. Massey, what kind of interest rate you gonna pay? I'm joking, shut up.
Glenn, you...
It's cheap.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
James, you've got to finish the last vote. Mr. James.
Mr. James, what's he voting on?
The last thing.
So, the vote on the airport resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My only opposition to this is that this will permanently tie us to this, even though we haven't actually gone for the funds yet. And this has, I think, been the one issue that I've disagreed with the community college on. From the process through, you know, being in a municipal year, 10,000 people voted for something that tied 170,000 people to a tax increase for 20 years. And what we have to remember is that within that 20 years, what that ordinance is gonna do is, the tax rate's gonna be able to go up as high as it takes to pay for it. And we've got, in 20 years, we'll have at least three revales, four revales, almost five. So, five in 20. And if the property values tank again, then that tax increase is gonna have to go up even higher, Mr. James. See, she do that to me all the time. I want to point at you this time, but we're talking about a tax increase, and it's gonna go, it's gonna go down. And then, if the property values go down, that tax rate has to go up even higher than it already is. And you bring it up every meeting. And I'm telling you this, 20 years of a tax increase will be locked in, and the reimbursement of it, and we'll have effectively approved it tonight. And we have to think about what the long-term benefits are. I just don't think it's an expansion time. I think our revenues are healing, but that's different than being healthy, and that we need to plan accordingly. And that's my opposition to it. Not the projects. Project's very valid and needed. I just think we need to find a different way to handle it.
Anybody else opposed to it?
No, I believe that the people told us what they wanted, and I, even though I might support everything, but I believe in doing what the people say.
Is the architectural fee a little bit on the high side?
Mr. Coulson, it is the standard percentage for the size of the project. This is $18 million project that was projected by the college and by architectural proposal, so it's not something we really negotiate, since all of our construction projects go through the State Construction Office.
I still think it's a bit high. I mean, that may be the standard process, but then there again, that gets back to government, and do we always act wisely, and do we act frugally? If I had a... I'm trying to think, what was the architectural budget for some of the things that Tom Taff brought? I don't believe it was quite this much for the buildings that he was talking about. Seems like a lot of money to me.
Anything else, Tom?
No.
All right. Are we, are we voting?
Supposed to be voting.
Well, where's, Dave?
You need to vote.
Dr. McLaughlin?
I'm already voting.
It's Tom's answer.
It's Tom.
Oh, Tom.
Thank you. All right, what's next? Thank you, Doc.
Next on the agenda is a...
Dr. Massey, thank you. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Your contracts for Pitt County Solid Waste and Recycling Container Sites. John Demery's here to explain to you an increase and a contract extension, kind of renewal for the two site operators.
These contracts were executed back in 2008 with Management Support Development, which operates nine of our sites, and Trust Denim Group, which operates five of our sites, went ahead and redid the contract. We increased, or proposing to increase the contract for five years, put a CPI, a potential CPI increase. Doesn't mean there'll be one each year. They can ask for one, and then, of course, we would bring it to you guys for CPI. As part of the renegotiation, the two contractors have requested a 6% increase. We, the last increase was approved in 2009, so they have not had an increase since then. And the new contract, I've put some, I guess, some teeth in it. There's a section in here, I really wanted to be specific, so you're aware. If violations are, right now, if I find violations such as the sites not opening on time, closing early, not being kept up clean, things of those natures, there wasn't really anything that we could do. So, this contract, after talking with legal and thinking about it, I put in here a section that after three violations per site in a calendar year, after the third one, the fourth one, we could start to fine them, I guess, if we will, $100 per issue. And what we would do is, we would deduct that from their next month's pay. That would give us a little bit of teeth in the contract. We're constantly, the sites aren't being kept up like they should be in cleanliness, which is, was, is part of their contract to keep things clean. I'm having an issue with sites opening late and closing early. And that will help address those. I get calls where somebody's on their way to work, they've taken their garbage with them, and the site not being open, and that's just...
That opening time is still 6:00 AM?
7:30.
7:30.
7:30. Closing time is 6:00 right now, April 1st through October 31st, it goes to 7:30. And then Sundays, from 2:00 to 6:00, and 2:00 to 7:30. So, I'm here asking that you allow the county manager to execute these contracts with a 6% increase. I'm also giving, I gave a little to them, I'm also gonna take away the yard maintenance, the yard maintenance from them, because in the old contract, they were required to do it, and they weren't cutting the grass. There was no specific time on when they were gonna cut the grass. A lot of sites just weren't being cut properly. So, I'm gonna get a yard maintenance contract to bring back toward, to you.
Just a minute, Reverend. Let's see if I can get everybody down. Dr. Johnson, Mr. Coulson, Mr. James, Mr. McLaughlin, and Reverend.
Would you like for a motion for us to approve it and then discuss it, Mr. Chairman?
No.
No, I don't think they want that yet.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has the county manager approved what you're just proposing?
Yes, sir. It's gone through its channels. Legal, county manager, Mr. Dickerson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Elliott, is, is what he's proposing been approved by you?
It hasn't been approved by me, but it is recommended, as stated on the agenda abstract.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's see. Tom?
So, you said that they, you had a contract with them in the last five years, but you couldn't enforce the contract when they didn't do the things that were in the contract? That's what I heard you just say. I don't understand that. I have a contract, I gotta, I've gotta do what's in it. Company I manage, we have a contract with GM, and I can't go beyond the contract in any way, shape, or form during the course of that. If I do something wrong, I get fined. I get penalized. But you're not able to do that with them?
I, I went, I came back sometime, I can't recall the date, that I wanted to rebid it, and I was told...
John, let me jump in here. I think we've had sporadic violations of the contract. Maybe a site closed or opened 10, 15 minutes late, early, but it was not consistent enough that we would have brought it to your attention to rebid the contract, or to award part of the contract to another, it was two main contractors. We're just trying to put some teeth into it, so that we can make sure that things are proper and orderly. Things never got out of...
So, going forward, we'll be able to do something. All right, that's good. Now, me?
Mr. Coulson, we did, I've contacted the contractors, and issues would, you know, improve, but if it's closed, if they close the site at quarter to six...
I think we should have taken the contract away from them personally. You should have wrapped them on a knuckle, Scott. Okay, as far as yard maintenance. So, now we're gonna give them a 6% increase, but it goes through. And it's gonna be an additional amount, and you sweeten the pot, because now you're gonna go out and you're gonna have somebody else do the yard maintenance in all the different sites. So, there's gonna be an additional amount on top of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then also on here, one of the big problems with our federal government is that in 1972, and I asked myself whether Richard Nixon had been smoking something funny, they had the cost of living increase. And I said then, and I was only in college, I said then, it's unsustainable. This country's gonna end up being in bankruptcy because of that. Fast forward to now, many of the problems we have is because of the cost of living increase. But you got on here with the opportunity for a CPI increase each year. Opportunity. Now, opportunity suggests to me that that doesn't necessarily mean they'll get it.
Correct.
That means that you're gonna come back with a recommendation to get it, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
And then it'll be up to us to decide whether we're gonna do it, yes or no.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. We worked out a deal with a hospital, and it's not indexed like the cost of CPI. It's indexed to some fund that's way below this. Why didn't we pick that as our barometer for an increase? I mean, it was good enough for the county. I'm being facetious when I ask that and rhetorical, and I'm not really expecting you to answer that, as long as it comes back to us for approval or not.
That it, Tom?
Yes.
All right, Mr. James?
Remember, Tom, these people on minimum wage. They're not gonna make but $10 in something an hour. So, what is 6% of that?
Hey, that, that brings up an important point. What happens, what happens if the federal government raises the minimum wage?
Oh, well, they can't live off of that. I'm not begrudging those people there.
That it, Mr. James?
No, it's not. I want, this is what I would like to have, Mr. Manager. I visited some of the sites today, as you know, and I was dissatisfied with one or two of them. I would like for you to have a report card. How often do you go, John, to visit these sites?
I try to go, I like to go once a week, but I don't go once.
Same, and I don't want once a week, but...
But I'd at least get to them twice a month.
I would like to see a report card on every site. You're gonna have your paper with every site, and give them a grade every month.
We do, we do, Officer Cannon goes to each site, is required to go to each site and do a inspection. And there is a form that we have that is checked off on certain things, and it is presented to the sites.
That is good. I would like, as a county commissioner, well, I'm not gonna be much on, but I, I still would like to have it, that each county commissioner get that paper once a month, as to what each site is graded, so that they will know what the site that you are in charge of. And I feel like I'm kind of responsible for the site that are in my district. I really do. And it's up to me to make sure, and John, you know, I've given you a hard time about Beth, but I, I'm so glad that things are working out better. But I, I think that's our responsibility. And if it's not being kept clean, I want to know about it, because I represent the people that are there. You follow me?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not begrudging that 6% on the guy with the minimum wage. I know he's got to drink some Pepsi Cola. That's all I got to say, Mr. James.
Web?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having heard what we've heard and viewed all of this, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this as, as recommended.
I second it.
All right, now, further discussion, Mr. Gash?
Yes. Is, is the contractor that has the Bells Forks site here this evening?
Don't think neither one of them are.
See, I, I have had several complaints about that one closing early. In fact, I had a call just last evening, that a citizen, two citizens went out there at 5:45, and it was closed. Now, I think that whenever, and this, this contract says that any violation closing early, I mean, closing early or opening late is considered to be a breach of contract. I think the fine should occur at the first occurrence and not the third one. And I think the fine ought to be significant enough to send a message that the contractor that we signed the contract with properly trains his attendance, so that they know they better open on time, and they better close on time.
I don't have a problem with that.
So, is the contract gonna come back to us for approval, about the timing of the fines?
If you make, if you put in the motion, otherwise, the contract is before you tonight.
What are the fines? Tell me what the fines are again.
The fines are after three violations per site, then the fourth violation in a calendar, and we're talking a calendar year, they'll start to get...
And how much is it?
$100 deducted from...
I would make that the second violation.
I second that. In other words, I'd give them one citation.
So, after the sec, the second violation?
The second violation, absolutely.
There, one time you could do it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, substitute motion... You know, substitute motion you're making, Mr. Gash?
Yes, substitute motion, include that in the original motion.
You got that? All right. Ready to vote?
And Mr. James, second it is?
Mr. James?
Yeah, I second that motion. I believe in being on time.
Okay. All right, next, who's next?
Next is Phil Dickerson.
All right, Mr. Dickerson.
You said them violation costs $100.
Good evening. I'll try to be brief. I won't go over much of your written material, but there is one part in the contract that we were proposing with Kimball that I would like to go over. We asked Kimball to give us a scope of work to do what we thought needed to be done. They came back with the 35, 25 testing sites, and I believe three trips back to make reports to the board of commissioners or the stakeholders. We didn't think either of those were enough, but we think we're gonna have to decide some of this as we go along. Therefore, we got a unit price for additional testing and a unit price for presentations. If you look at the $1,975, sounds like a lot of money, but these people that are coming, probably consultants, charge $150 an hour. They are coming from Texas, so when you look at it from that perspective, the price is not bad. So unless there are further questions, that's all I have.
Ms. Ward?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this. This is an independent company from the one that installed it.
Yes, we actually interviewed this company the first time around.
Right.
Mr. Gash?
That motion is being made and seconded. One question. Scott, I think we are in agreement on this, but that first item there where it says that the Kimball will meet with the stakeholders and gather information, that will include the fire chiefs, right?
Yes, there will be a meeting specifically for them.
Very good.
They'll fire Andy MS.
Andy MS, very good.
And we would be including all of them?
Correct. The chiefs.
Right. That's why I won't, don't, won't leave any of them out. I, I have a question too.
Tom, then you got the question.
It dawned on me about two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, the places where they can't, the pagers don't go off and so on. Do cell phones work there? My cellphone works everywhere.
Yes.
It works in the depths of the, of the hospital. It, why does this system not work as well as a cellphone? I, I'm, I'm, that's a rhetorical question, and I just think somebody needs to be asking that of whoever the provider is.
I think I can answer that question pretty clearly. You remember USA, you rented a site from us so that the signal could penetrate the hospital. They also rented, I believe, can't remember whether it was two or three more sites around the hospital. There's one, I needed shopping, so there was one down on Alden Boulevard. So they've added those additional towers to be able to penetrate the hospital.
But if I go in the northwest part of the county where the, the chiefs are complaining about not being able to get a message, will, will my cellphone go off or not if you call me?
I would say it would.
Yeah.
Doesn't that strike people as kinda funny? My cellphone will work there, but we spent all this money for a system, it doesn't?
I've been arguing that ever since we worked with it, Tom, to have something funny about it, but nobody listened to me.
Well, we're listening now, Mark.
If we had it, had, we'll just take a number, four towers in the county, the pages would probably go off.
So if there truly was an emergency, if we had as an alternate their cell number, which most everybody has now, we could've probably gotten ahold of them, at least some of them, through the cell.
I believe, I don't know a whole lot about the process, but I believe that they do back up with cell phones, but...
Correct. You think their cell phones are an alternate pager, paging method?
Tell him that they're where he's from.
The commissioners that recognize the cell phones as a paging means. You're right, it's a great backup. I've got two of them. I've got my cellphone and I've got an iPad. And I alone went off Saturday. My pager, thank God, went off. But my cellphone or iPad, either one went off.
Really?
So it's, it's a good thought.
All right.
But we need, we need the pagers to be able to go off.
For sure.
And, and keeping in mind, there's over 200 cellphone towers and one tower for the system that we're using.
All right, anything else on this?
Let me ask a question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
One, one final question. There is a timeframe for Kimball to do this work and report back to us with recommendations.
They first, first said about 20 days, and we told them we want it back in 35. So we make sure that this is something that we want back as soon as possible, but we want to do all the work necessary to get a good result.
And so that timeframe will start from today?
When the contract is signed.
Which should be this week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I wanted to ask a question on this, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
I, for the north west, or ye said what you wanted to call it, but anyway, the northern part down there, and it's other places too. When do you anticipate that they are going to do something? And are you checking on the towers that are already there to see if we can put, use those towers without us putting up a tower ourselves?
Well...
We need to do this first, James.
Yeah, that's the whole purpose of bringing Kimball in, for them to analyze the entire...
So they're, they're gonna tell us that.
That'll be part of their analysis.
They're gonna be, and you think they can do it, huh?
They, yeah, they're gonna test for signal strength and tell us what to do to get a proper signal strength to send off the pages and for the radios to work.
People, I've been told that you're having problems in other parts of the county. Is that true? Nor, is this the only place that you're having problems at? Yeah, that's... Yeah. Everywhere. Okay. Well, I'm kinda like, some more, I got my cellphone. I can get one, I can get calls in the hospital or anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval.
I don't understand any... All right, I have no further questions.
What do we vote on?
For this was to pay this company, not doing the independent...
Phil, one, one more thing. Number two on page 107, I hope you stress that.
Yes, absolutely.
We've got a motion being made in second. Are you ready to vote? All right. Thank you. All right, we're now on number five, Mr. Elliott?
Yes, you have an amendment?
If, if you will, Mr. Webb is gonna take care of that. I'm gonna abstain from any participation in that one.
Which one is that?
We have the...
Have we moved on to Candlewick?
Yeah, yeah.
Block grant, yeah.
All right.
You're saying the community.
That's one, Candlewick.
There is a possibility that Candlewick Sanitary District can obtain a community development block grant. They will pay the entire cost of installing the sewer system. It costs us about $4 million. And, but the Candlewick District itself cannot apply for the grant, so they're requesting that the county act is applicable. The only cost to us would be staff time for, make it simple, managing the money as it comes in, seeing that it's appropriately used, engineers will do the rest, and be paid out of the grant. Mr. Wade and some other members of the sanitary district are here, and Representative from McDavid Associates is also here. So if you have any questions of them, we would like to hear from them.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Dickerson, are you saying there won't be any cost then to Pitt County Government?
The only cost will be some administrative cost for managing it. The money will come to us, and we will have to disperse it. But the engineers will take care of all the billing, the contracting, and so forth. There's just mostly a little, some staff time.
And Director of Rite, basically.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we accept this. We have done this before for other things in the county, and we have been on board with this project from the get-go, so...
I second it.
Motion's made and seconded, in discussion?
Yes.
Mr. James?
You know, we went out there some years ago, and I was often wondering what had become of it. That's what I don't like about government sometimes. We postpone things too much. And I think it's high time we got involved in it and help those people out all we can. So I support it 100%. I think we...
Mr. James, we've, we've been trying to work with the Candlewick Sanitary District. This funding opportunity just enveloped itself.
Yes, now.
I think we've been keeping our eye on, with them and the, the engineers, to see what would become available. They made it knowledgeable to us, and that's why it's coming before you.
That's wonderful, and I sure do appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Clerk, I was supposed to have abstaining on that. Can you correct it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, folks, for coming. All right, now...
Yes. I remember, I remember.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number six is an amendment to the Winnebago Board of Adjustment. This is a replacement of Judy Melnick, seat number two. They're recommending Jeffrey Breiley be appointed to the seat.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Got you. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, number seven?
Number seven is the Pitt County Board of Health reappointments. You have two, Judy Kukindal. Dr. D H Taylor be reappointed for another three-year term.
I so moved, Mr. James.
All right.
They have proven themselves.
I believe we've had a request for a closed session?
Yes, sir.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, and also under subsection A1 to review the content of closed session minutes. I wait, I'm just wait. You need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Oh, okay, I thought I... Thank you.
In open session, Mr. Webb, you got something you want to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve our closed minutes as to the content only for October 7th and October 20th of 2013.
I second it.
Vote? Any commissioners' comments? Got a motion, Mr. James?
No, no, I'm ready to adjourn.
Okay, is that a motion?
Motion made for James and Coulson to adjourn.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you all.
We earned our money tonight.
Mr. Chairman, this is a long committee, we've had a long...